Then I call this the regular meeting of the Eugene School Board to order. It's Wednesday, March 2nd, 2022 at 7:03 PM. We have all board members present virtually. Maya Rabasa, Alicia Hayes, Gordon Leifer, Laura O'Rourke, Martina Shabram, Mary Walston, and myself, Judy Newman. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now we'll do the land acknowledgement. Lisa probably is going to put it up. The Eugene School Board would like to acknowledge that our institution sits on the homelands of the Kalipulia people. In the treaties of 1851 and 1854 to 1855, and the subsequent forced removals of many Indian people from Western Oregon, some of the Kalipulia were moved to the Grand Ron reservation and some were moved to the Selettez Reservation. It's important to note that all of Lane County was an important trading and gathering area for camis and other resources. During the restoration era from 1977 to 1989, Lane County was designated as a service area for the Confederate tribes of Kous, Lower Amquah, Sayuslaw Indians, and the Confederate tribes of Grand Ron Indians, the Confederate tribes of Celeste Indians, and the Coquill Indian tribe, and the Cow Creek Band of Amquah Indians. Eugene School District 4J acknowledges that the descendants of original and service area inhabitants of this land are still here today. They're thriving members of our schools and our communities. Countless members of other tribes now also call our community and schools their home. We wish to thank those original stewards of this land, and we as fellow stewards of this land wish to remember that we need to take good care of this land and take good care of all the members of our school district community. Thank you. So the next agenda item, the first thing on our agenda is to do that review our agenda for tonight. And Gordon has his hand up. I just want to also, I'm going to just make one comment before we go to Gordon's request. And that is that I'm going to, we have a COVID update tonight already on the agenda as an item for information. And we're going to put it as the first item for information and follow it then with the KPI and see if we have enough time to have the CTE report as well. Because we're going to be discussing masks tonight, and it might take longer than we put on the agenda. So if there's no opposition to that, I'm going to just do that. Okay, we have Gordon's hand in, oh, sorry, Laurel. Did you have opposition to doing that?
Well, I think we should let the process work as opposed to for Robert's rules because we, I know I have something I want to change for the agenda, but I think other people are in front of me, so.
Yeah, no, I was just taking it one at a time. So that one is just a flipping of order. So if we're okay with that, we don't have to vote on it. Then I would, because we vote on each, if we talk about each one.
Well, that would be a vote to change it.
Well, I actually, I think someone, we can pull something or flip something without a vote. We're not, we're just rearranging the order. We don't need a vote for that. I did check on that before.
Okay, well, let's go through the process.
Okay, Gordon.
Thank you. There are two things that I'd like to pull from the consent agenda for discussion. On the item, three personnel items, I would just like to pull out the appointment of Dr. Brooke Wagner. And then item four, annual personnel actions. On section H, there's contract extensions of three of the senior cabinet members in the personnel items that I'd also like to just pull out for discussion or consideration.
Okay, then I'm going to, if you're pulling those off the consent calendar, I can just put them down. I'm going to put them under items for action then, tonight. Okay, thank you. Maya.
I would like to move item 14, our only item for action, up in the agenda schedule to before, between the consent agenda and item 13, items for information. I'd like to do that because we have a tremendous amount of interest. And I know a lot of those folks interested are students. And I'd like them to be able to hear our conversation and in the process without having to stay up until whatever hour we're in business.
Is there any objection to that? If there is, we'll take a vote on it. Okay, let me just.
I thought we could flip without taking a vote.
Only if there's an objective, if someone has an objection to it, we would take a vote. So I'm just going to flip it because I didn't see any objection. That's why I was, yeah.
Oh, I heard you just say the opposite. Thank you.
Yeah, I did, I didn't mean the opposite.
I don't have an objection, but can we just, can we restate what the order is going to be now that we've had those few changes? That would be helpful for me.
Yes, thank you. So we are going to go through our, do you want me to list everything that we have? The superintendent and the board chair, reports from our high school students, items raised by the audience, comments by employee groups, and then comments by individual board members. And then we have removed a few items from the, we do have the consent calendar with the removal of the three senior cabinet members and Brooke Wagner from the consent agenda and move them to items for action. And then we have, we're moving the item for action on the racial harassment policy up to before items for information. And then the rest, and then down for items on items for information, we're putting the COVID update first. We have a hand up from Christine Nesbit, please. Yes.
Hi there. You can remove the whole item from the consent agenda, but you cannot modify the resolution except by a motion. So in other words, the entire item is being moved. It isn't just that you pull out Brooke Wagner. There is a full item there, a full resolution. And once you get that to the item for action, you can debate the resolution and potentially amend it at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. So the whole item on personnel action is now under item for action. Okay, Gordon?
I guess I just wanted to check with Christine if, when we get to that point, if it's, I'm guessing this is possible, to first just say, okay, we'll amend that by saying everything else is going to go through, and then we'll save the other, these other items for discussion. We could do that as an amended resolution and then come back to the other items, just so everything else isn't held up.
You can have whatever debate. No, the item has been actually removed from the consent agenda. The entire item has been removed. So now that entire item is going to be discussed and voted on as an item for action.
Okay, I think I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for letting us know that, Christine. Appreciate it. So now, does that seem clear, Martina? That whole item is removed from the consent agenda. Okay, thank you. All right. Then we're going to move along in our agenda. And tonight, the superintendent Vanderkar has been excused from this meeting. Her father passed away this morning, so she is with her family as. And we just want to extend our sincere condolences to her and her family tonight. And I'm glad she could be there, so. Then we're going to move along to, and so what, who we have is, we have Kyle Tucker, who's our COO, Chief Operations Officer, is here to support us as long as everyone else. So if we, he'll put on his camera if we need him and we have any questions for him. But he sort of helped us finalize the agenda and is there for our support. So thank you, Kyle. So I'm going to now give my comments for tonight. Last Friday night, I attended the NAACP's Annual Freedom Fund Dinner, which was a sold-out event and a very fun and inspiring evening. Oregon Secretary of State Shamaya Fagan was the keynote speaker and talked about protecting voters' rights and the importance of that. There was an inspirational choir and several excellent speakers. I just want to share one powerful story that was told that evening by Miles Pendleton. He is the current president of the Eugene Springfield NAACP chapter and a fairly recent graduate of 4J schools. The part I want to relate is the experience he shared of having a black woman principal in his elementary, during his elementary years in 4J. Many of you know her, it's Martha Maltrey. He shared the profound positive effect that having a person who looked like him leading the school he attended had on him then and far into his future. She was the first and last black administrator or teacher he had for the rest of his middle and high school experience. Martha remained a support and mentor for Miles throughout his educational experience, and they are still close today. In fact, at the dinner, she read one of the many poems that she wrote for Miles over the years. This was such a personal example of why we need to continue and to expand our efforts to recruit and retain staff of color in 4J schools. We really owe it to our students. As many of you know, our board had a training retreat this past weekend. We spent all day Saturday and all day Sunday with our skilled and amazing facilitator Monica Santana Rosen from the Alma Advisory Group. We were working on ways to improve and strengthen our communication, and we identified ways of engaging in constructive dialogue and discussion. We had time to get to know each other as individuals and understand the personal stories and motivations that we bring to our board's service. We have seven individuals who come together to lead our school district and make decisions as a governing body that impact our students and staff. We had a very productive and meaningful time together this past weekend. We learned that every board member shares a common interest and goal and a very strong commitment to ensuring that 4J has high-quality public schools that support each student to be physically and emotionally healthy and to thrive in their learning. And we each understand and acknowledge that to accomplish this, we must find ways to individualize the education and supports for each student. Some of the tools we learned and practices were the same ones I identified in my board comments on Friday, on February 23rd last week, about best practices and that contribute to working as a high-functioning and effective team. To understand the needs and hopes and fears of others and what they want to accomplish, to speak to common or shared interests, to listen to others carefully and validate that you've heard them and that you understand what they're saying, to step back and look at the situation from the other person's point of view and be open to new and different ideas. At the end of our two days together, each board member was asked to comment on our time together. These were our takeaways. I believe we are stronger. I feel more invested in each of my colleagues, not just as fellow board members, but as human and real people. We missed the step of building community early on. We had the opportunity to learn more about what's beneath the surface, our core philosophies and shared purpose. As board members, we were able to step back and reconnect. When discussions get hard, we now have tools to be able to pause and check in on how others are doing and check our assumptions with each other before we respond. It was nice to have people in person. My one word at the end of the weekend was grace. We were really able to understand the important roles each colleague plays on the board. I feel seen as a human being and as a real person. Every single person showed up with their full self, and I'm appreciative of the space we were able to create. We felt connected and safe to work through challenging issues, and I left the retreat feeling hopeful for the future. So I want to first make a couple announcements. First of all, I just want to remind people, we aren't overlooking, I want to remind them to be thinking about this, that next week is Classified Staff Appreciation Week. So think about classified staff in your life and appreciating them in some way that's meaningful. And I just wanted to also say that I got a text late afternoon that we got word that EEA overwhelmingly voted to ratify the tentative contract agreement with 4J. So that's very exciting news. And I just want to end my comments by thanking my fellow board members for their shared sincere commitment to working together. Thank you. Now, I'm going to move along to comments from our student board representatives. And I, oh, good. We have Yoseline here first from Churchill. Thank you. You want to go first?
Yeah, sure. Hi, I'm Yoseline. I'm the student body president and board representative for Churchill. So you guys mentioned that you were going to talk about the mask mandate later. And one of our concerns that I've heard from different students is the mask mandate being lifted in schools. And since the cases in Eugene are still pretty high, it's a little concerning. But you guys are going to talk about that, so I don't think I have to worry about that. We're planning for prom to be May 7th at the Lane County Events Center. Hopefully, it's not for sure, but we're planning definitely for May 7th. We're trying to get Spanish announcements back into our announcements daily. And I think some students are concerned that it will get maybe denied for every day because of like the time limit or because we only get like a certain amount of time for announcements. But I think that can definitely be adjusted, especially for inclusion for students that don't speak English. So we're trying to do that. And then we're planning for Classified Staff Appreciation Week. Our leadership group was actually one week early, so they'll just have a longer appreciation, like two weeks. So we did posters for that, and we're going to start making cards. And then we're planning our flag announcement. We're going to hang up flags from all different backgrounds, all different countries across the world. And we're going to hopefully get that put up by spring break when we come back from spring break. And then we just finished Black Excellence Week, which went really well, and our student panels went really well. I think it was a pretty good time. I was one of the panelists. I really enjoyed it. The only thing I have to bring up is that students were a little worried about teachers having to turn in their work or turn in their final grades on Thursday, that final Thursday at 4:00 PM. And students were worried that that means that due dates would get pushed up like a week or two for students to turn in their things. So that would mean in the next like week and a half that the students that are behind would only get, a week and a half to get caught up to get their things in for finals. So that's something that students were worried about. And either it would be like that or teachers would make it like the Monday before that Thursday due. And I think that's all I really have. We haven't really had a whole ton going on. Yeah.
Thank you. And it looks like Joanna, you're welcome. You're ready to go next.
Yes, I am. Thank you so much for having me. So I just want to start off by giving you guys an update on something that I talked about last time. I talked about the 504s and IEPs. And I wanted to let you know that I have since met with Principal Inman. And there has been a survey sent out to students with 504s in order to center the student voice, which we felt was missing. It is an attempt to get students' perceptions of how their 504s are being implemented and how supported they feel. So we are working to fix that issue on Sheldon grounds. I would also like to inform you guys about Black History Month. We had a very successful celebration of black history during February at our school. I have a list here. The Native American Student Union worked to display native black Oregonians who lived in the tribes. The Asian Student Union showcased Afro-Asian entertainers and defined the word "Blasian" on posters in order to bring awareness to that. The Latino Student Union also displayed stories of Afro-Latinos in the main hall. The Pacific Islanders drew cross-tribal murals. The women of color read black female authors. The GSA supported black LGBTQ specifically, people who had been murdered or are missing. Leadership and ASPs showcased black bios in the hallways. And during the morning announcements, teachers read the bios of their favorite African-Americans in history and in the present, or favorite influential African-American people in history and in the present. The Black Student Union also did a hoodies update, a BLM memorial, and an African-American trivia event. In addition to that, we at Sheldon, I believe tomorrow, are hosting Lily Parker, who is one of the most, or one of the first, I'm so sorry, I had it right there, okay. One of the first black students to attend Sheldon and graduate from Sheldon High School. And we are hosting her tomorrow in the Multicultural Center. And that's, that's a really big deal. So that is, those are some of the ways that we have celebrated Black History Month at Sheldon in efforts to celebrate our students' diversity. When it comes to athletics, the boys and girls basketball teams had their senior night last Thursday, and it was a success. The girls are in a position to host the playoff game next, I guess, tonight, that would be. And they are currently in the top 16 of OSAA rankings. Sheldon is sending three wrestlers to the state meet at Sandy High School. And then swimming wrapped up their season with a strong showing at both the district and state levels. Additionally, the band and the choir had their trimester two concerts. And in last weekend's solo ensemble festival, Sheldon Dublinaires won as well the overall. And they also won the alto and soprano section. So they are sending people to state. So, and I believe the band won several sections of that as well. So athletics and arts are both thriving right now at Sheldon. And things seem to be going really well on the student front. We're having more and more seniors commit to universities, which is super encouraging to see, and it's fun to get to celebrate that. Right now, prom and graduation are scheduled and a go. I do want to say that the one concern that we have expressed, and this may come up later in the mask debate, but I just wanted to express that today, the survey that was sent out on masking was on the canvas. However, people noticed that there was a lack of information about what the new policies would entail. So people did not feel well enough informed to make a solid decision on which policy they will support. And I'm sure that we will cover that later. But I wanted to get that out there, that we appreciate that students were able to fill out the survey, but would, students would love more information so that they can make an informed decision on their preference. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanna, very much. And thank you for circling back about some action that was taken with one of the things you brought up. Appreciate that. So I think those are our two student reps tonight. We don't have any others that were able to come. So we're going to move on to items raised by the audience. The school board receives written comments by email at board@4j.lane.edu and sets aside time in each regular board meeting to hear public comment. Community members can sign up to speak to the board by submitting their request online at 4j.lane.edu/board-publiccomment or contact the superintendent's office. The deadline is the Monday before each meeting. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes and cannot give their time to another speaker. A timekeeper will show a sign when the speaker has 30 seconds left and when their time is up. Speakers may offer objective comments or criticism about district operations and programs. For complaints about individuals, the district has a board policy and complaint process. Please contact superintendent's office at 541-790-7706 for more information about submitting a formal complaint. Tonight, we have seven speakers who signed up to speak, and Carrie Delft will introduce each speaker for us.
Thank you. We do have seven speakers. The first is Stacy Black coming in as a panelist now. She will be followed by Andrew Black. Ms. Black is in as a panelist. And you can turn on your camera and your microphone and begin your three-minute comments now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for giving me three minutes to talk tonight. I'm sorry, I'm not as prepared as I would like to be. I read the Ready, School, Safe, Learner document that came out today, and I'm encouraged that the state is dropping the mask mandates. And I am happy to hear that the vaccine requirement for state workers, thousands of state workers, is going to be dropping on April 1st. I'm happy the CDC is not, no longer recommending contract tracing or quarantining. And, you know, the corporations and giant concerts in whole countries are dropping these mitigation strategies because higher levels of immunity are being reached through both natural infection and also vaccine-induced immunity. So that's all good news, and I am encouraged by that. I think that the weight of these mitigation strategies have greatly impacted all of us and these poor children. I'm calling, I'm calling in tonight to speak on their behalf. I feel like there's a lot of confusion and fear that is happening. And I listened to a city club discussion last Friday, and it was all about kids' mental health. And they, three local experts called what kids are going through right now a crisis and talking about, I don't know, just our need to be there for them and hold them and take care of them. And they talked a lot, talked a lot about resources. But I think taking these masks off the kids will greatly help. I mean, if they want to. I feel like it should totally be a choice, but letting them see each other's faces and their teachers' faces again, you know, their caregiver's faces will really do a great deal for our children these, today. So I was happy to see that RSSL talked about mental health for the kids. And a quote out of there is that it's important to remember that our community will be living with the virus for the indefinite future. And I think that that is something that, that we all need to be aware of and help the kids be aware of and just try to move on as best we can and as carefully as we can, but also recognizing that the damages that some of our students are having on our children. I also would really like to see equity and inclusion moving forward with any policies around, you know, hopefully not doing exclusions and not doing, separating kids into different sections of, you know, vaccinated or unvaccinated and just treating each other equally. So I'll take that all the time that I have. Thank you.
Well timed. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Andrew Black, will be followed by Sarah Zaw. Thank you. The next speaker is Andrew Black, will be followed by Sarah Zoll.
Hey there. So can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Andrew. Good.
Okay, sorry, I didn't see any notification. Yeah, I'd like to express my appreciation for the school board members and their work towards improving the education of our children. Tonight, my message is simple: Drop the mask mandates in the COVID quarantine requirements and treat all students equally regardless of their COVID vaccination status. These are reasonable requests, and they are requests that are supported by the recent updates made to the Ready School Safe Learners Resiliency Framework for this school year. Regarding quarantine, I want you to consider the following excerpt from page twenty-two of the updated framework document. On February 28th, 2022, the CDC updated their guidance regarding case investigation and contact tracing. Universal case investigation and contact tracing are no longer recommended outside of high-risk settings. Effective March 12th, 2022, Oregon will pause contact tracing and quarantine for the general population, including K through twelve settings. The, the decision to pause contact tracing and quarantine is based in science acknowledges that these practices now have very limited, if any, impact on transmission of COVID-19 in our communities. SARS-CoV-2, the virus that causes COVID-19, has evolved to become one of the most transmissible viruses known. By the time an exposure is identified and contact tracing is performed, transmission has already occurred, end of quote. The text I just read to you acknowledges that it's not necessary to quarantine healthy, symptom-free students that may have been exposed to COVID by a friend, family member, or teammate. No more quarantines, no more needlessly missed classes, no more quarantines, no more needlessly missed athletic events. The updated framework document also states the following: Quote, "Following the Omicron surge and for the time, for the first time during the COVID-19 pandemic, Oregon will have very high levels of vaccine and infection-induced immunity. The duration of this immunity is unknown, but is believed to provide protection from reinfection." It's important to note here, end of quote, "It's important to note here that the state is finally acknowledging that students who were infected with COVID develop strong immunity to reinfection." Finally, this is important since many students have been infected with COVID, and the power of their natural immune system should be respected. Finally, I'd like to end by encouraging the school district to drop the mask mandate. Let the kids see each other. Let them see their teachers' faces. COVID restrictions are ending all over the nation and all over the world. In fact, the following Oregon schools, districts have committed to drop the mask mandate. Fern Ridge, Pleasant Hill, Bethel, Alsey, Redmond, North Clackamas, Canby, Oregon City, St. Helens, Capuse, Westland, Wilsonville, Silverton, Sherwood, Canby, Oregon, sorry, Mount Angel, Saniam Canyon, Gaston, Minville, Amity, Tiger, Walton, Marion Counties, and these.
Thank you. Ms. Zoll is not in the audience, so we're moving on to the next speaker, which is Harry Sanger. He will be followed by June Orion.
Hello, Mr. Sanger. We can see you.
All right, thank you. So thanks for allowing us this time tonight to share with the board. Hopefully, everyone up here has had time to review the new RSSL framework released today. This new guidance instructs schools to take steps to encourage, ensure the school environment is safe and welcoming to every student and staff member, and honors their individual decisions around COVID-19 safety, including the use of masks. Unfortunately, this has not happened this past year with the district making families choices for them. My kids come home every day upset about the masks, and my son constantly loses his glasses when they fog up, and he removes them. So to include their perspective on masks.
Masks? Masks are like good for you too, well, because it tastes like it all. Everyone's wearing masks, and they don't like that. I think masks are in school, masks fog up your glasses, whoever you are. They fog up, if you have glasses like me, they fog up your glasses, and it's pretty hard to see out of them. That makes it harder to do work if you're constantly having to wipe your glasses. Because what's the point of having masks? It'll protect you from germs a little bit.
So the new state guidance on face coverings reads, "The decision to require universal masking in school settings will rest with local decision-makers in school districts, charter schools, private schools, and local public health authorities. At all levels, individuals may choose to mask based on their individual risk assessment. Masking should be normalized and welcome within the school community. Not masking should also be normalized and welcome within the school community. To do otherwise goes against the principles of fairness and equity being espoused." And thank you, Andrew Black. You read the other quote I was going to have about quarantine and contact tracing, so I'll jump to the end of that. In lieu of contact tracing, schools are strongly encouraged to provide cohort notifications when exposure occurs. These notifications allow individuals and families to take additional precautions according to their individual needs. So I applaud the state for catching up in their RSSL guidance and encourage 4J to update their policies immediately for the comfort, safety, and well-being of our children. I respect the choice of those who wish to continue masking. Please do not stigmatize district families, whose individual choice does not include masks or vaccines. This has been hard on my families and others in the community, and I ask you to please support our right to choose. So again, Andrew, you would have thought we coordinated that. We didn't. But I'll see the rest of my time, so we can get on with this. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. The next speaker is June Orion, will be followed by Gabrielle Hatton, and finally by Camille Foskett. Ms. Orion.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm June, and this is Joseph. We are both non-binary high school students here in 4J. We would like to bring to your attention the reporting system for reporting hate and bias incidents. We, we need a system that doesn't run law enforcement, building principles, or assistant principles. Part of this is in the racial harassment policy, which we fully support. One thing the racial harassment policy is lacking is a texting line that students can use to report incidents. We always talk about how people will be extra mean on the internet because they can hide behind a screen. I believe we can use that anonymity to our advantage. Students will most likely feel more comfortable reporting incident via text than in person, or even on a phone call with someone. I believe that having a texting line will lead, lead for reporting to happen at a more timely matter. Matter. If the incident is reported in person, the person receiving the report should let the reporter know what to expect when they report, whether or not this will stay in the loop or confidentiality will be in place without the reporting. If they will be left out, they come up with a plan and timeline of what will happen, or tell, or tell the reporter how they can stay in communication with the incident, whether it's through papers. After an incident is reported, whether it's reported in person or online, the student or staff should be kept up to date on what's happening. What's being done?
We have both experienced confusion in the reporting system. We reported an incident of racism and insensitivity from a staff member to the administration. Given it took us a month or so to report it due to the lack of knowledge on how to report incidents, lack of trust that something would happen, and finding time during school hours. Eventually, we both did within a few days one another. A few weeks later, June happened to see the administrator we had reported to and asked him if anything had happened. June was told that a conversation took place, but the administrator couldn't tell them due to admin staff confidentiality. The same thing happened to me after that conversation. It left us feeling in the dark and just kind of uninformed. We need more transparence, transparency. It made us wonder if something even happened, or if that was just an excuse because no action took place. Feeling of hopelessness is making us very wary of this system. All students should feel supported speaking up for themselves and their peers. We understand that the administration has a lot on their plate, but that still doesn't make us acceptable. We wish this topic could be of attention, but change is past due. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Gabrielle Hatton is joining as a panelist, and she will be followed by Camille Foskett.
Can you hear me now? Okay, I am just wanting to thank you for letting me come. My reason for being here is to say it's time to get rid of the mask mandates. One thing that I come across when I was doing some research was how it, the face masks prevent the mirroring of facial expressions, a process that facilitates empathetic connections and trust between pupils and teachers. This potentially leads to a significant increase in socio-psychological stress during childhood and puberty. The brain undergoes sexual and mental maturation through hormonal epigenetic programming. Several studies show that long-term exposure to socio-psychological stress leaves neuroepigenetic reprogramming scarring. And once this happens, it's very hard to get that child to be able to get past it. It's like a PTSD situation, and it causes havoc. These, this is really troubling to know that we don't know what the long-term ramifications are of this. This is what's, one girl that actually had, wanted to post, she's a New York school eighth grader, and she said the masks were like hands over her. She's weeping. This is how these kids are feeling. The other thing is, I noticed that just recently Kate Brown was visited, or was in Washington DC at a super-spreader event where she was unmasked, along with many other people, hundreds of people, not wearing one, but yet our kids sit in a classroom with masks. This was not an isolated incident for the picture. There were hundreds of people. So why is it that our kids have to mask? And even Gavin Newsom, they both have the same type of thing. Look at these kids. But yet, these leaders of ours, they can choose to not do what our kids have to do. This is hypocritical, double standard, and it's not okay. It's not fair. These kids are paying the price. My son is supposed to be able to not have to wear a mask. He's disabled. He has Gr2A gene mutation. And the World Health Organization says the use of masks for children in any age with developmental disorders, disabilities, or other health conditions should not be made mandatory. So my son has been told, put your mask on. Another girl that was had her mask covered, or covered on her face by a teacher when she was sleeping. This is child abuse, and I'm not okay with it. And that's all I have to say, because this is ridiculous. Get rid of the masks, or people will start leaving in droves.
Thank you. Thank you. The final speaker will be Camille Foskett, who's turning her camera on now. The other speaker, Sarah Zoll, did not appear in the audience, so this will be the final speaker.
Okay, well, good, good evening. First, I would like to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight and share my thoughts, feelings, opinions, personal experience, and extensive research I've done about masking our children. I've been a part of the 4J community since we moved to Eugene in 2011 as a parent of three, and now as an educator at the district. In regards to masking, I believe that it has been detrimental to the emotional health of our young children, most particularly those K through five, because this demographic is still learning and adapting to social norms and expectations of kindness and inclusivity. From an emotional developmental standpoint, our children learn these skills through social cues we receive from a smile, frown, or scowl. When our friends are smiling, we know they're happy. When they're frowning or have a long face, we know they're sad. When they're scowling or have pursed lips, we know they're angry. A mask prevents us from communicating accurately those emotional states because we can't see the mouth. People say that the eyes are the window to the soul. I believe that the mouth is the window to our hearts. From our mouths, our friends, family, teachers, loved ones, can understand what our heart is feeling. Like I stated before, not only do masks impair the ability to pick up on social cues crucial to understanding someone's mood, but it also reduces the ability for people to communicate effectively when we are both sending and receiving information. How many times have we been asked to repeat ourselves and ended up just like pulling our mask down so we can relay the information? I know I've done it many times out of sheer frustration, thus negating the whole purpose of a mask. These communications, these miscommunications that have happened continually over the past two years have been blockades to our children's emotional and academic learning, and I believe it's a slow silencing of our youth. So many times, one of my students that I've been supporting has just given up trying to tell me something because I cannot hear them through the mask, or vice versa for myself. I've either agreed to something I didn't mean to, or I pretended to understand what the student said to alleviate the extreme aggravation. This ends up biting me in the rear later because the trust relationship has not been severed with that student, and that impedes their learning in the future. We know the importance of oxygen to the brain, yet we don't know the lack of oxygen is doing to, to these kids' brain, and I believe as well as others, that it's not worth the risk anymore. Many of us have already caught and recovered from COVID and/or been vaccinated. I want everyone to feel safe, and I would never undermine or try this is the real threat of COVID, but science tells us that we're past the worst of it. And so my question to you all on the board is, are you comfortable with keeping a mandate that does not currently, is not currently needed, but might continue to inflict harm on our young ones? And furthermore, if you all decide to continue on with masking, are you prepared to answer to those parents who, whose children now have delayed speech, emotional and behavioral issues, and all the other immeasurable side effects of masks? I think the right thing to do is let every family choose what's best for their, make masks optional. Thank you.
Thank you. Lost my screen. So Carrie, was that our last audience testimony?
Yes, thank you. That was the last public comment from the audience. And we do not have comments expected from EEA or MAPS.
Or OSCE. So none of the employee groups tonight, right? So then we'll move along to board comments. Who would like to go first? Alicia.
Thanks, Judy. First, thank you for everybody that spoke this evening. I'm very excited that we might be removing the mask mandate. And I really appreciate that we actually, I don't know, it feels a little lighter when I hear the comments and really appreciate the research and that conversation. And Harry, it was great to hear your kids' voices. Thank you for that. My schedule this week was, I also got to attend the Freedom Fund Dinner and was incredibly impressed by the Secretary of State and want to learn more. And then I spent my weekend watching basketball. No, wait, I spent my weekend at a retreat with all of you. We had the budget committee meeting, and then Maya and I got to meet yesterday with the superintendent around equity. I'm excited that we're moving forward with the getting the committee together and moving and getting first meetings underway. So I think that that's the committee meetings I went to and, and my comments for this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Alicia. Gordon has his hand up.
Thank you. I want to first just extend my personal condolences to Superintendent Vanderkar and to her family for the loss of her father. I also want to thank my board colleagues, and especially the Chair and Vice Chair Judy Newman and Martina Shabram for their work on the retreat we had this past weekend. And then the main thing that I want to talk about is a proposal to add librarians to elementary schools. And this is something that, a proposal that I'll be making a motion at the end of the meeting to put this on the agenda for a future meeting. Eugene schools used to have full-time certified librarian in every school, and these people were critical to helping students learn to enjoy reading. In 2010, we lost our last elementary school librarian, and as of now, we have zero librarians in any middle school or elementary school. I'm going to be proposing that we put on the agenda a proposal that we fund a five-year pilot project in which we put full-time teacher librarians in three of our highest, highest need elementary schools to be picked by the district staff. We've talked in the past about how many desperate needs we have and how hard it is to know what to fund. You talk to librarians, you think we have to hire more librarians, but then you talk to nurses, you think the same about nurses, or about counselors, or about educational assistance, and all of that is right, and all of that is desperately needed. But I think there's something particular about librarians, which is their impact on one of the boards and districts and states' long-term goals, which is improving third-grade reading levels. We spend a lot of money and effort on trying to improve reading in elementary school through curriculum choices, in-class libraries, digital tools, and more. But there's critical research showing that having certified teacher librarians makes a dramatic improvement, both in third-grade reading abilities and in the likelihood that students come to enjoy reading and become lifelong readers. And while the statistical studies show that this is an impact that is positive for all students, it's an even bigger positive impact for students of color, students with disabilities, and students from low-income families. Our own district librarians have done tremendous work in researching this issue, and something that they're not going to benefit from in Our own district librarians have done tremendous work in researching this issue and something that they're not going to benefit from in any way. No more money, power, job security, or anything. They have identified 12 different metrics that we could use to evaluate the impact of elementary school librarians, including standardized tests and other measures. So I'll be proposing that we fund three full-time librarians in three highest need schools and ask that we ask staff to identify the best metrics to use in evaluating the impact of this pilot program. So that at the end, we can make an informed decision about continuing, expanding, or ending the program. Or if the program proves successful, we'll have hard data to take to Salem to lobby for additional funding so that all students can benefit from this. Thank you.
Thank you Gordon. Uh, who else would like to go? Who'd like to go next? Maya, thanks.
Sure. I, um, I was also able to attend the NAACP Freedom Fund Dinner and Alicia said it. Shemia Fagan is a powerful speaker and an inspiring woman. And I, um, I really enjoy every chance I have to listen to her, um, spread that inspiration into the community. She was followed or accompanied by a handful of other speakers who were equally compelling. So it was a wonderful night. It was a nice time to chat with other folks at the 4J table and get to know each other as, as folks just enjoying a meal together. Um, I learned about people's preferences about mashed potatoes and other things that are just light, but also offer us the opportunity to give each other, um, windows into ourselves beyond these little Zoom windows. Um, I've been thinking a lot about balance lately and feeling a little, um, precariously perched. Um, so I, I am going to start with the things that I'm really excited about. I'm really feeling good about the board's work this weekend. We, we worked our tails off. That was 15 hours of really hard work and, and we came to a really good place. And I'm really excited about where that is leading us. I'm also, um, feeling really, really optimistic about the prospect of diminishing COVID risks. I, I, I still want to be very careful, but, but I'm feeling, I'm feeling, um, like the rest of our community, this, um, new sense of contagion, which is, which is hope, um, and, and not, um, aerosol spray. Um, likewise, I, I'm really excited about the action item on our agenda tonight. I, um, we have worked so hard on this racial harassment policy and I'm feeling, um, very hopeful and excited and optimistic about passing it, but also seeing how it might transform our district. Um, so those are the things that leave me feeling really confident. At the same time, in addition to the personal loss of Superintendent Vanderkar's father, um, which I send my condolences and, and sympathies, um, there's a, there's a heaviness in our community. Uh, over the last week, we, we also lost two former students. And, and my heart is really aching for those families, um, and, and for the beloveds of those students. And I just, I want to make sure that we take a moment and pause and, and recognize the significance of, of the diminished light in our community when we lose young folks. Um, it's a, it's a very profound and very specific type of loss and, and, um, and, and I'm really, I'm carrying that heaviness and having a hard time balancing it with the, with the positive things I just expressed. Um, with that said, the mother-in-law that I had for almost three decades would be very upset with me if I didn't also acknowledge the classified staff week that is coming up next week. Um, she was the grade school secretary for decades in the small town that my husband grew up in. And, um, in her honor, I want to make sure that I pause and, and, and remind and encourage everyone to really, um, reach out. Those personal notes go so far beyond anyone's understanding of impact, honestly. I don't, I don't even get it and, and I see the impact, um, and I, and I, I just, I, I want to receive that and encourage people to reach out. Um, and I also want to remind us that, that classified staff, for those who don't know, are more than just the, the cooks and the secretaries like my mother-in-law, um, or even the bus drivers, all of whom, please, please, please express your gratitude. But there's a whole lot of people who are kind of the hidden workers of 4J as well. And when you think about like a car driving forward, it's the people that are like under the hood as the engine, so to say. And I'm thinking about, um, in particular, um, I learned recently about our grounds crew. And I see them out and about doing their job, but I had no idea the tremendous responsibility and amount of work that they take on. So just to give you an idea, so that when you see them, and even when you don't, it, it's not hard to reach out. You can look in the, in the directory and look up grounds and you'll see a list of names. But there is currently eight full-time ground staff and they take care of 600 acres of, they do things like trimming, mowing, turf maintenance, basic field maintenance, irrigation. They cover it all. And this is a huge amount of labor. And it's really significant for us as we're entering this season of negotiations. We just wrapped up our licensed staff negotiations and now we're doing our classified staff. So I want to think about those folks and, and extend the week of appreciation, um, beyond this five-day, you know, designated time period and make sure that it, it's all year, but in particular, as we're approaching how we, um, interact in the negotiation sphere as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Maya. Who else? Mary, thank you.
Um, thank you Judy. Um, and I want to express my deepest sympathy to Superintendent Vanderkar and her family. Um, I know how difficult this is, um, having gone through it myself. Um, and so I'm just, uh, really, uh, hoping we can all come together and support her in whatever ways we can. And especially as we, uh, move on the agenda tonight, there are some items that I know she would probably prefer to present, but I just hope we can keep her in our thoughts and be respectful of her position, uh, while she's not here tonight. So I do appreciate that. Um, I want to also thank the Alma Group for their report. It was nice to, to finally see the results of the survey and it was heartening to see that people actually think we're doing good work. Uh, if you just watch these board meetings, I'm not sure you'd come away with that, that impression. So I'm glad it's going to be posted on the website and I encourage people to look at it and read it and help us in the next steps of selecting a permanent superintendent. Um, I noticed that Noah, my student from, from South Eugene is not here tonight and I guess she's at a ski race, but I just wanted to say that we had coffee about two or three weeks ago, uh, delightful hour and a half with her. Uh, she's an amazing young woman, uh, bright future, and I, she can talk about her future plans, but, uh, it involves, I think, going to Yale and becoming, uh, like an international diplomat, uh, global economist-type person. But just a fascinating, uh, young woman. She's also a ski racer and that's where she is evidently tonight. So, uh, again, after I spend time with any of our students, I have great hope, uh, for the future in what sometimes is a very dark world, especially this week. And then finally, I do want to, uh, note that the North staff team met last Friday. Gordon was on the call and he can, uh, update if I've forgotten anything. Uh, basically there are some decisions being made about the old North building. Um, we talked about how to engage staff, uh, that both, both YG and Kelly and the next steps forward. So I would encourage us, as I've said probably three or four times before, that we need to have a work session on what these goals are and what they mean and what the common interpretation is because we've asked the superintendent and her staff to help us meet these goals. And I don't think we've ever talked about it publicly, uh, with, with the whole board. And I think the rest of the board deserves to know what's going on too. And as we approach the superintendent's evaluation, if we're supposed to evaluate her on the goals, and the achievement of those, and it would be good to have us all have a common understanding of that. So, um, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Martina, let me know she's not going to make comments tonight. So, um, I think that leaves Laurel.
Hello, can you hear me? All right. Um, so my, my comment is about, um, the video that the, um, the district released, um, where they're talking about our, um, I guess I'm trying, I was trying to look up the name for it. Um, it's called No Place For Hate: Anti-Bias Harassment and Student Safety. And so we're talking a lot about this right now, right? It's important. It's what, it, it's what, it, I guess I've been thinking about ever since I attended 4J schools. Um, I'm glad this is in the forefront and I appreciate, um, I'm sorry, I don't have everybody's names memorized. I'm in Florida right now, so my time zone brain is, um, it may be really late here. I'm acting like Gordon now and he's across country. Um, so, but Larry, when he, from, if, when he talked about how we're, um, we're trying to, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm reading my notes. Um, we're trying to be more consistent with the work and the path, we're, and making up for, um, you know, actions and policies that weren't in place in the past. And so I appreciate that him mentioning that and the student affinity coordinators that are now working in the schools and that they put together a hate and bias response team. Um, I love that we're doing the work and I absolutely support staff in this work. But when I see this video, the things that concern me is that we're also showing an undercover EPT detective, um, talking about a lot of it's happening on social media. Well, we know that and especially the students know this. And what this video was to say is they want to encourage people to report. And I think they said that many times pretty well, but when the visuals are a detective and, and then in the background, school safety monitors several times. I think we're, we're giving mixed messages to the students and to our, the parents and the people in our district. And I want us to be really careful about that. The reality is every time on this board, almost every time that we've mentioned race, we've also mentioned school safety mon- monitors and, um, and behavioral issues. And there's a, we need to stop making the correlation so consistently because you are sending a definite message to our community, which is the one that says, this is what, how we correlate people of marginalized groups and that we also need to have, um, you know, we have the safety monitors and the, and the, um, and the police involved. Um, I wish I was more lucid than I was, I, in my head, this sounded great. I can hear myself right now and I'm not loving it, but I hope you get the gist of what I'm saying. I appreciate the work our staff is doing and has done. And I think we need to send a, a, a much better message than we're putting out right now. Thank you.
Thank you Laurel. Okay, now we are moving to the consent agenda items and I believe there are just two on there now. Martina, want to make them?
Okay, so I move approval of the consent group items one and two.
Do we have a second? Okay, Mary, thank you. Martina's moved and Mary seconded that we approve the, uh, items one and two on the consent agenda. All in favor, raise your hand. Oh.
I, I want to, I wanted to ask a question to just to make sure, I know, I just want to make sure we pulled out both items that Gordon had talked about.
Let me, yes, clarified. We pulled up both the personnel items, yes. So we are voting on the minutes and on the bond project item. That's one and two. Okay. So all those in favor, the, uh, please raise your hand one more time. Thank you. Uh, that's seven votes yes, so the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So now we are going to move to, um, the action item on the racial harassment policy. And I believe that we have Christine Nesmet to present on that. Thank you Christine.
Good evening, board members. Um, so this proposed board policy has been, um, presented and discussed at a number of, um, prior board meetings. And following the last board meeting, um, I was able to put together a revised version of amendments. Um, those were uploaded into the packet due to time constraints. Um, and we knew I was not going to be available, so, um, those have been uploaded today. And, um, that's all with the superintendent. I know her recommendation is to, um, pass the, um, board policy as proposed.
Thank you. Uh, Mary?
Wrong button. Uh, this is for Christine. Pass the board policy as proposed with the amendments or without the amendments? I just want to clarify that, that statement. Please.
Um, I don't believe, so I have not been able to, um, speak with her today. Um, however, I mean, staff are not in, opposed to the board amendments. They needed to be presented in an amended form in order to allow the board to debate each individual one, if the board deemed that necessary to do so. And because, um, staff was not able to put together an integrated, um, whole. I also want to call out that, um, there, there would need to be a clarification in the last amendment. Um, just to clarify, let me see that. Just bear with me one second. Um, the, the last proposed amendment related to incorporating community members into a bias incident response team. Um, the, you know, as has been previously stated, the, um, the superintendent and, and district staff have concerns about incorporating community members into a standing and very dynamic and time-sensitive, um, bias incident response team. However, staff have also acknowledged, and this is not the first time I've said this, that community partners definitely have a role in supporting and enhancing the district's ability to, to respond and in some cases, in providing a comprehensive response. And after, um, obtaining some clarification from board member Rabasa today, I think that, um, the language that I think is both, um, I, I won't speak for her, but that makes, makes sense from a staff standpoint would be to articulate that underneath the, the district section of the district responsibilities on page three, um, that the district will maintain partnerships in the community that will enhance the district's ability to prevent and comprehensively respond to major incidents.
Thank you, because I just, I know that you, uh, you were overloaded with work and we just got this and I'm not blaming anybody. So I appreciate that clarification. And then we're going to have to, uh, probably vote on all five year, the points in the memo to amend the, the proposed policy, correct? Just want to make sure I got the process right.
That's, that's right. And then, and then just one other point of clarification, well, as long as we're getting into it. So, you know, staff are looking into the issue of, um, mobile phone, um, applications that are other than the Safe Oregon. So right now we've got Safe Oregon. We actually have received racial harassment reports through that avenue. I also understand that, you know, it's a priority for a number of people to look at another avenue and we're doing that. Um, it, there's a whole potential system that is at play here. So without overpromising, I was recommending language that would make it flexible for the district in terms of, um, you know, we, we don't know how much these programs are or how much they cost. There are some, um, specifications that they would have to meet to really meet our needs. Um, so with that in mind, just opening up the wording, um, so that it says, um, reports could be, you know, the district will provide multiple avenues for reporting, including, um, the optional student safety reporting form and/or a mobile reporting option. And we'll continue to dig in and look at the viability of that. But there, there are a number of administrative considerations that go along with that piece.
Well, I'll, I'll let the other, I see Maya has her hand up. A lot of other people ask, ask, answer, ask their questions. And if we go through this, I would, would like a little bit more about Safe Oregon line, but, um, thank you for that right now.
So I think Mary, to clarify, well, after Maya speaks, we'll be moving the approval of the policy and then go through each amendment. So, okay, Maya.
I was going to actually do exactly that.
Go for it.
I move to approve policy ACC racial harassment.
Do I hear a second? Martina, so Maya's moved and Martina's seconded that we, um, approve the, uh, ra- approve the racial harassment policy ACC. So do we have a discussion? Maya.
So will this be the time to um, bring up the amendments or do we can I go ahead and get started with those right away? Or do we need to have just? Okay, great. Well, then we received in our a little bit late, but if you can have it up in front of you, it might be easier, although I'm happy to read the the verbiage as Christine generously prepared for us. So the first I'm gonna check, I'll do it as a first amendment, first motion, I move to amend page one, purpose and scope to insert the following sentence under purpose and scope between sentence one, all programs and activities, and sentence two, off-campus behavior. To read, it applies to all persons in the district, including students, staff, board members, and volunteers. The second part is to revise footnote two to include a reference to reporting against a board member. Reports against the superintendent should be made to the board chair. And then add, reports against a board member shall be made to the board chair and processed in accordance with Administrative Regulation K L A R. And thank you, Lisa, for putting that up on the screen so that the listening audience can also see it.
Perfect. Okay, so do we have a second, Alicia? You're the second. Okay, so Maya's moved and Alicia's seconded that we approve the amendment um, that is written here right in front of you that says page one, purpose and scope. Any discussion about this item? Maya, your hands up. Do you have some discussion?
Nope, I'm just eager Beaver, sorry.
Okay, see no discussion. Should we vote on this amendment? Call the vote. All those in favor. Um, I'm gonna see if I can. Oh, great. I can see everyone's hand this way. Please raise your hand. All those in favor of this amendment, please raise your hand. Seven, I see seven yes votes, so the amendment passes unanimously. Okay, Maya.
Okay, on to the next section, and thank you again for scrolling down. I move to amend page two, reporting and administrative action anonymity and reporting method to revise the first paragraph under reporting and administrative action upon receipt of a report to. Students and families are encouraged to report their concerns promptly. Reports may be made in writing or verbally to a school administrator or other trusted school employee. The district will provide multiple avenues for reporting, including an optional student safety reporting form available from the school and on the district website and or a mobile reporting option. Reports may also be made through Safe Oregon at one eight four four for safe O R. Text or call or W W W dot Safe Oregon dot com. Reports by staff members and others are expected to be made promptly to the school administrator or department directly director. Reports may be made anonymously.
So you're moving that amendment. Can we have a second? Then we can have discussion on it. Is there a second? Alicia seconds, okay. Maya's moved and Alicia's second amendment two, as it appears on the screen and was just read. And now we'll have a discussion, and it looks like Mary Walston has a question.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure this gives us, I think, the wiggle room we need, because I understand there are other options out there. But from what I know of Safe Oregon, you can be anonymous, and you can go online and do this. And it actually in some ways provides a larger safety net for for our students. So I, like I said, I would hate to just say we're not going to do it because we don't like it, or we're going to go with this new new product that we don't know that much about. I would just like us to allow some administrative discretion when it comes to what this might be. And you know, we can always come back and amend this one little section, but I just would hate to see us get locked into something via policy, which is so specific, we can't update it later on as we as we move through with this. And I I do want to commend Superintendent Vanderkar for all her work on this, as well as the group that's worked on it, because I know that 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 she's done a lot of this, and this is really important to her. And I, again, I'm sorry, she cannot be here to to help us in this discussion. But that's that was my concern about the Safe Oregon, that we we provide as much flexibility as possible. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Did you want any a response from our Christine Nesbitt on that? Any comments? Were you looking for that?
If 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 she feels like there's one to be made, or she just understands what I'm saying about administrative discretion, I don't think I need it.
I do believe it gives the administrative discretion that's necessary. I mean, we we absolutely have to vet any products we're thinking of and and figure out the scope of what it would be, figure out the affordability. So it's possible a separate product won't happen or won't happen right now. But it's also, you know, at least as possible that it that it will. Although not right now, probably be more more realistically for the following school year. But this is just an area we'd have to research.
Okay, that's that's the response I hope to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Laurel and then Gordon and then Maya. So Laurel.
Uh, yes, can you hear me? Okay, so I I do want this to be tighter, and I would like and or to be changed to including a mobile reporting option. My reasoning for that is that there's been so much hesitation and pushback and just refusal of a low barrier option. Though we hear consistently from students, we hear consistently from people in the community that work with our students. And we hear consistently, well, from parents as well, that a low barrier option is absolutely needed. And we heard that tonight with two students in our public comment. So I think it's it's very important that we don't say, hey, we're everything's fine how we've done it. This is a a new policy where we're saying we want to do it better. And I just like to say this, this is a board policy. So while a lot of work has been done by staff and everybody who's worked on it, the reality is this is something that we as a board are saying, this is what needs to happen. This is what our expectations are because it's important. And that's why there's so many of us looking at it. So do I need to ask to amend this one section? How do I do that?
I think you it sounds like you're proposing this an amendment to the amendment.
I'm proposing to amend and or, yeah, where the where the cursor is to including a mobile reporting option. Which isn't, which is not the same at all as Safe Oregon, which goes to law enforcement.
Do I have a second to Laurel's amendment? Gordon seconds, okay. Laurel's proposed and Gordon seconded that we amend this amendment to see to say including report replace and or with including. Okay, any discussion on this this latest amendment? So Gordon, you were in the queue already. Mary, are you still in the queue? Because your hand was still up. Okay. Why don't you put your hand down? And Gordon, perfect. Gordon and then Maya.
Thanks. Yeah, I I would support this. I know this is, I'm kind of going to say things that other people have said. I feel like we're adopting a policy before we know all the details of exactly how it can work, which is fine. And we are building in staff discretion to basically say, like, in good faith, figure out what the, you know, what the details are that will work best. So I do think that we should that it's really important to have a mobile option. And in general, I mean, this is, this is not language, but kind of my opinion as guidance for the staff and using its discretion. I would rather spend more money and and do more work to guarantee that we have the easiest and most anonymous options and most trustworthy options, which means an option that would be not the school, you know, in addition to school and public safety, also other options and anonymous and texting. And I I think that that's technologically possible. So so I'd like to urge that in general. And then I would support this in particular. And I guess I would, this will come later, but I guess at the end, I think it would be, maybe I'll I'll make this as a final amendment when we get done with the other amendments, that it would be good to come back like a year after this is whatever we come up with has been in place and do a review that would include getting input from student organizations, just to find out, did what we create actually create a thing that people feel really comfortable and easy to use? Or are there still some things that we should be looking at? But for now, I'd support Laurel's proposal.
Maya, do you have comment on the amended amendment?
I do. Um, you know, I have to say that talking, there's a couple of things that are going on in my mind on this. Talking it through with Christine this afternoon, it it made sense to write it as it is. And then I was listening to Mary talk about the importance of keeping in the Safe Oregon line, which we know we've heard from folks who have been skeptical of that avenue. And and then the call for flexibility and options. And I think that Laurel is asking for something that, from my understanding, and I'm looking at Alicia, it sounds like a lot of work is being going on in the tech department to figure this out. And I wish Sid could be here today to to add on to that. But it sounded very promising, and it sounded as though by changing the language, as we had previously asked for from a texting option to a mobile option, that gives the district a little flexibility and leeway in establishing something that could could be put in place. And and it sounds like it could be put in place at a at a reasonable cost, as it includes something using Google Docs, which we already have the account with. Anyway, I I don't want to go into the details of it, but I do feel confident that that from what we were learning, there was the work was was really in full swing and pretty close to to having a solution in place. So I I would support Laurel's. And then listening to Laurel, Mary, and then considering the the removal of text to broaden it to mobile.
Are there any other questions or discussion about this? Uh, Alicia.
Can't get my little hand up there. Laurel, will you repeat what you said and and what your hope is with that? Change?
Um, yes, I I said in the one, two, three, four, five, the fifth sentence down of the second paragraph and or a mobile reporting option, I would like it to say, including a mobile reporting option. I find and or to be very not quite as saying, yes, we support absolutely a mobile reporting option. It's kind of like if possible, sounding usually what and or is. And it's also not in in formal writing, it's not considered the best way to write things. It may be different and legal, so I won't even try to guess that because that's not my job. But including a mobile reporting option.
So you're changing from and or to just including a mobile?
Reporting option. And I, yeah, I don't know that there's a lot of work happening. I just know that there's been a lot of pushback. And also, it was just recommended to adopt that everything without these amendments, even though we've been asking for them, it's pretty much the entire time. So I really would like it to be in the policy that this is our expectation, because again, we've just heard students in public comments saying how important it is to have something like this. And it will used, I think, will have a an uptick in reports.
Okay, so I just thank you, Laurel, for that. That helps. I was having a hard time tracking on it. But little highlight in everything is extra special. I'm gonna just support what Maya said, which was as soon as the question came up at our last meeting that the superintendent had staff working behind the scenes and trying to figure it out. We, you know, it's not as easy as being in an nonprofit where government, we have response. We have different rules around what is anonymous. And if there's a text, as you know, that can be traced back, what does that mean? And so appreciate their being very thoughtful, thorough, and fast in what they're trying to do to get this thing handled. So I'm not seeing and I'm I'm not gonna pretend to understand wordsmithing and what's the right way to write something. I'm also not gonna be like Laurel and not pretend I'm an attorney. So I'm guessing and or or including, to me, just seems a little more like we're expecting it versus we're expecting it and we're hoping it it'll be there. So I'm I'm fine with that unless there's some big reason that I don't know about. So thanks for going over that for me.
So thank you, Alicia. Christine, do you have, I I'm just wondering, were you, since the superintendent isn't here, maybe just briefly say some of the research that you've been that's been happening? And then I would like to hear if you think changing that to including including substantially changes the intent.
I I do think it changes it in the sense that it 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 requires a mobile reporting option beyond Safe Oregon. And that may be fine. It's not something that's in place right now and may not be in place until the following school year. So that really was the concern. We are exploring products that essentially provide the functionality that Safe Oregon provides. And 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 that's really important for the administration of it, because we have a big system. So I know that that is under works in underway. I don't know, we don't know how much they are. We haven't assessed the product yet or products plural, let alone purchased them. So we've done a preliminary look. And then I have not, I was not privy to the conversation related to the Google reporting. I know that we have created a draft Google reporting form, but I'm, I don't know if that is different than than what may have been discussed by the superintendent. In terms of wordsmithing, i- if you are, if the board as a whole is inclined to change it so that it is absolutely clear that we are going to have a mobile reporting option beyond the avenues already listed, then I would suggest you do just an and a mobile reporting option. Because this says, including an optional report form available from the district. It should say comma and a mobile. So if if that was where the board was going, I I think that sounds better than a it reads better than a second, including.
Laurel, do you, how does that sound to you?
Yes, it has the same intent. Thank you, Christine.
So any other questions or um discussion on this amended amendment? Mary. You're you're muted, Mary.
Sorry, I I just want to make sure I understood what we what was actually being written, because it's been now it's being highlighted and changed before we actually vote on it. So that's all. I just want a a final clarification. Before you vote, but if there's more discussion to be had, then go ahead.
I so far, unless Maya, do you have more discussion? You're muted.
I was just gonna say that it is the basically the removal of the word or.
Yeah. So it it would read now. The district will provide multiple avenues for reporting, including an optional student safety reporting form available from the school and on the district website and a mobile reporting option. Is that clarified? Okay, any other discussion? We'll call the question on that.
Okay.
Great. Okay, can we vote on the amended amendment that I just read? All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, that meant the amended amendment passes seven to zero. Okay, now we're back to the original amendment. Which it appears now on the screen in full. Any questions or discussion? Mary, your hand is up.
Oh, I'm I can't see myself, so I will lower it. Sorry.
Maya.
We need to to bet on that also, now that we passed the amended. We need to, to bet on that also now that we passed the amended.
Yes, we do.
Um, okay.
So let's call the question on that. All those in favor of the, uh, number two amendment as it's highlighted in gold on the screen right now, please raise your hand. That this amendment passes, uh, seven to zero. Okay. Maya, you're up.
Woo-hoo. All right. I move to amend page two, "Reporting and administrative action notice of resources" to insert the following sentence under "Reporting and administrative action" in enumerated paragraph number two, "Taking interim actions" to read, "This will include, as circumstances warrant, a description of resources."
Uh, do I have a second? Alicia, so Maya, oh, Amaya moves and Alicia seconds the number three amendment on page two that we're looking at. And we have discussion from Gordon with his hand up.
Thanks. I have, I, I might have an amendment to propose, but I wanted to ask first, I'm not sure what the phrase as circumstances warrant means or, or should we not to say this? Like, is there a reason to not to say this will include a description of resources and support structures?
Christine, did you have a?
Yeah, I think, um, one of the things that this language connotes, a- 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 at least the way I think it would be understood by administrators is probably there, there may be a written description of resources that we provide that may not be appropriate in all circumstances. And so that's the, that's the concern. So we do it that, and, and that's what I thought that the, um, proponent of, of this was sort of getting at. I, I realize we haven't had a lot of extended conversation on this element. But I thought the notion was, we want to provide people with, um, information about community resources or relevant individuals. Um, it could be in, in school resources. And what I found in the, in a different context, when you, when the regulation covers a really, really broad range of behavior, um, requiring sort of a, a one size fits all response can, um, it cannot work that well. And so administrators need the ability to say, yeah, they, they need this description of resources in this case, but not in that case. Because it just really does depend, it just depends on the circumstances. That's all. So we have some unfortunate kind of, um, mandates from the state where we have to provide information that really, it, when it, when it's the lived experience, it's, it really feels very inappropriate to provide at times. And so that's what, what I was trying to address in terms of the flexibility. I hope that helps.
I think I may be a little too dense. I still, I still can't quite picture what, I don't know if you can give examples without compromising anything that shouldn't be compromised of what's the kind of thing that would be inappropriate?
Oh, ab- absolutely I can. So yeah, the, the, the thing that comes to mind is, um, a few years ago, the, um, legislature mandated that a, a notice of rights and essentially resources be provided to, um, complainants and respondents in sexual harassment cases, in all sexual harassment cases. And sexual harassment cases run a very, very wide gamut. It's a very broad definition under Oregon law. And so providing this notice of, and, and, and the state legislation mandates exactly what needs to go into that notice. Um, and, and it's fairly particular and it really is ill-suited. Um, and it's, it's not, uh, it's a very uncomfortable thing for administrators to provide in a number of cases, particularly more at the early elementary or mid elementary level or in very, very low level cases, because it doesn't, the policy can be violated, um, through a, a wide range of conduct. And then all of a sudden, the administrator is giving both, both sets of parents notice that they can go see, you know, sexual assault support services, um, support over at SAP, over at these community resources, right? And so it doesn't, it's ill-suited to the situation. So I, I think that there just needs to be some flexibility. I think we've learned from that experience just having, being able for administrators to use some judgment about when they, when and what level of resources are provided. Cause it, it actually is really seen as, as very alarming and threatening in some cases to families and not productive.
Thanks. I, I, I understand that and I get that. I guess I'm just a little, I don't know. I don't know if Maya, you can speak to this. I would just like to be able to do what you're saying, Christine, but also not set up a situation where somebody who we'd want to have a right to get information wouldn't get it because, I don't know, because of whatever. So I don't know if anybody else who's been involved in this can, has an idea of how to.
I has her hand up, has had her hand up. Were you gonna respond to that, Maya? And then I see Laurel raised her hand too, so.
Respond to that and I would love it if that maybe could pop back up on the shared screen. Um, because I've become a little reliant on that. I can use my own screen if possible, but, um, yay, thank you, Carrie. Um, Christine, I, um, listening to you talk now, I heard a word said like over and over and over again that sounded really compelling and that was the word appropriate. And warrant feels, um, um, related but slightly different. And I'm wondering if it would be appropriate, haha, that was intended, um, to say something more along the lines of this will include a description of resources and support structures, comma, as appropriate per circumstances or something like, if that makes sense to, to, to make it about the appropriateness of the circumstances and not about the, um, you know, I know a lot of what we've heard, uh, from our equity directors is that it's really important that this becomes something that is consistent across the district. And I'm concerned that there will be, if we leave the word warrant in there, it leaves space for, um, one situation to look very different from another based on the decision to not offer anything. Cause it, it leaves that open that nothing will be offered. So I would love it if it was the, the list of resources were appropriate per circumstance. And that might mean that people have to be ready with their list of resources to cut and paste as they print them out, right? So I can recognize that what you're saying is that there's times when, when it, there, every situation honestly should look different because every situation should be treated with the specificity that it comes forward with.
Uh, Laurel.
Um, I was gonna say something very similar that, um, because in the way the, I hear what Christine is saying is that we don't want to, um, bind, um, administrators' hands too much to where they have to just do everything cookie cutter style. That's not a good way to have to work and that's not what we, we should be leaving. Um, we trust our administrators to do good work. Um, but in this policy, it seems to me that instead of putting as cer- the circumstances applies to including it, not to what would it will include. So, um, as my, as Maya was saying, to make it as circumstances, um, what is it? As Maya is very similar, I thought, resources suitable to circumst- circumstances. So that, that was my thought about that.
Any other comments? Alicia, was that your hand? Yes.
It is me waving around.
Then Gordon, sorry.
So I know we had this conversation, uh, week ago when we were discussing this and I don't think Gordon was there for that. But it sounds like we're all pretty much on the same page. It's just getting clarity on, um, uh, the best way to, uh, when you read it, to impart that knowledge. Uh, so you know, I'm not gonna be the one that's gonna try to put that sentence together. So how, I, I am fine, um, because I think our intent is the same. I am fine with whatever language you put forward that allows the flexibility for the circumstance. Um, so just wanted to say it's all good for me as long as that concept that we're all kind of agreeing to, uh, gets moved forward in whatever language.
Gordon and then me.
I was really gonna say the same thing. I, I would support Maya's language, which I think, I don't know if it's Judy or somebody else who's typing on the screen, but is the language that's on the screen.
Great. Um, I was gonna say a similar thing because I felt that was the intent. So I guess I'm just gonna defer to Christine from a legal point of view. Does that read okay? Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I think that's, that's flexible enough. Um, and it, it, it doesn't say written resources in every case. And, and I think again, you, you know, you're covering a really wide range because of the wide range of behavior. Um, so yeah, that's great.
Right. So I think we could just say that's a friendly amendment because everyone's wanting the same intent. Does that work for everyone? Okay. Then I'm gonna say any other discussion? Then I'm gonna call the vote for the amendment three as it's written on the screen. And the language now is this will include a description of resources and support structures appropriate to the circumstances. Okay, all those in favor of that amendment, please raise your hand. We have seven yes votes, votes, so amendment three passes unanimously. And now we're on to four. Maya.
So I would like to amend page three, "Reporting and administrative action. Technical correction to enumerated paragraph number six, notification of impacted persons." I would like to revise sentence one of enumerated paragraph six, notification of impacted persons to read as follows. Notify the impacted persons and perpetrators and their parents or guardians if they are students regarding the outcome of the investigation.
Oops, do I have a second to that amendment? Maya's moved and Alicia seconded. So, um, let's, any discussion? I don't see any hands up, so let's call the vote on this amendment. All those in favor of, oh, um, Laurel, no, you're just voting. Okay. All those in fit, all those in favor of amendment four, raise your hand. Okay, that amendment passes seven to zero unanimously. So now we're on to amendment five and Maya, go, go introduce it, please.
Great. Um, so, um, just a quick preface, the, the first line of this, which is incorporating community members into the bias incident response team, um, maybe should even be kind of separate and held out because we don't include the bias incident response team in the policy as it is, um, written. And so I'm gonna move to add to the district responsibilities. And I think that's, um, would district responsibilities, Christine, be the reporting and administrative action section? No?
No, it's, it's actually, um, at page sixty-six of your book or page, um, page two of the policy. There's a section called district responsibilities.
So I'm gonna, is it okay that I, does it make sense that I remove that first part, um, as it's now?
Yeah, that, that is just, do you mean maintain partnerships or?
Incorporating community members.
Yeah, that, that was just a header. That's not the actual, um, proposed language. Only the, the stuff in blue is the proposed amendment.
All right. So then I, to add the following sentence to district responsibilities. Maintain partnerships in the community that will enhance the district's ability to prevent and comprehensively respond to major incidents.
Do we have a second? Maya's moved, Alicia seconded. Okay, any discussion on this item? This amendment. Uh, Mary?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, hear a little bit more about, but Christine had mentioned this upfront when I asked and just delve into a little bit deeper, like the, the pros and cons. I, I, I'm not arguing against it, but I think community partners are important. Given that we are a government agency and, uh, you know, we have to follow due process and things like that. Um, I, I am a little bit concerned about, you know, having a partnership versus, or a, a, a community response team that includes community members versus a different relationship in which they're partners in, in addressing the issue, if that makes sense. Um, and I, I'm, I'm, I'm being really articulate around that. Maybe it's the hour, but, um, I just, that's like kind of what I heard Christine saying and maybe she can help me articulate, articulate what I'm trying to say. Again, I'm not against the idea of partnerships. I, I'm, I'm a bit concerned about an active role for, um, a community, uh, person at large, for lack of a better term. So that's, that's my concern and maybe Christine can help me kind of articulate what I'm trying to say. If appropriate.
Yeah, so, um, sure. So the, so we did receive public feedback that, um, at least the way it was interpreted by staff was that community members wanted to be on the sitting bias incident response team, which staff interpreted that as meaning attending the bias incident response team meetings and necessarily be, being, um, incorporated, incorporating outside third parties into the response, which may not be appropriate in all cases. And so there was, we, we saw issues with that, but I think where there's, um, no debate at all is that there is an incredible role for community partnerships to play in bias incident response. And that doesn't mean that they sit on your team. That doesn't mean that they're, um, on the cell phone necessarily in live time dealing with a major incident. I think what it means is that you are developing those relationships so that you can better prevent and that you can better respond, that you can notify the affected community at appropriate times if you need to, that you know who the maybe key players and resources are in the community to connect impacted people with. So there are, there are some different roles to that, that community partners can play in our research on bias incident response teams. I real- I, I, I didn't see, and, and again, it wasn't exhaustive, but it was, it was a fair bit of research. I didn't see any, um, outside third parties actually as sitting members of the team per se. It was more that the bias incident response team accessed those, uh, community partners as a resource to the team. And I think there is value in that. And then, uh, yeah, and I could go on, but that was just it. So Mary, uh, to answer the, your concern, I'm, I have no concern about this relation, about this language right here.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's why my hand was up. Thank you. Up, all over my hand. Thank you.
Maya.
Um, Christine, you just said it so well. You know, I'll add as maybe an example. Um, Mary, what comes to mind is, um, the number three amendment that we just passed. For example, the offering a list of, of these persons and support. Um, this could come into play there. For example, I know with the situation at North Eugene High School, the district reached out to the NAACP, um, and they lent support. And, and, and similar situations could arise and this just puts it in the policy that we will maintain partnerships. So the reason that, that heading wasn't highlighted and, and I was definitely not as articulate as I might have been was, was to make sure that we were emphasizing that it was removed from that, but that these relationships with the community would not only be maintained, but, but they would be, um, incorporated into the prevent and comprehensively respond, um, ability on the district's part, part.
Yeah, and thank you. And I have nothing against community partners. I, I don't want that to be the implication. It's just, I was just concerned about, uh, uh, an active member of the team and Christine's explanation, your explanation, Maya. Were very helpful. If that's the legislative intent and we all understand that, then I'm fine with this as it is. Thank you.
And I, I, Mary, I, I wanted to say, I don't think there, um, that was communicated at all. I, I didn't hear that from you. I just wanted to say that also for the listening audience as to how we're envisioning this, um, ongoing relationship to be maintained and, 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 you know, part of the, part of the process, but not directly part of the bias incidents response.
I just had one comment. I just had one comment to, which is really just to thank uh the group that worked on this with Christine and Sid and our our board members that found this this amendment really, I think, has strengthened the policy and is something we can actually really um implement well. So I'm I'm really appreciative of finding this the solution. So thank you. Other um comments? Then we will call the question. All those in favor of Amendment Five as it appears on the screen, raise your hand. Uh Amendment Five passes unanimously uh with seven votes. So I think Gordon, your hand is up.
Sorry, I know you thought we were all done.
Well, I think we have to now vote on the whole thing.
Well, I wanted to propose, is this the appropriate time to propose one more amendment? Or do we need first the motion on the whole thing as it? You told me.
I'd say let's go back now since all those and let's work pass it with the amendments that we have and then entertain another amendment.
Okay.
Okay, so I believe that motion was on the ti- oh.
Don't I think that's, sorry, maybe Martina's gonna jump in on procedural issue.
I just to be clear, Gordon, are you um so we have just passed all five of the amendments. And so now we're going back to the main motion, which would be to vote on the policy as it stands, including the amendments that we just approved. Are you wanting to add another amendment?
Yeah, so that
Then I think we, I think we do have to do that now before we vote on the main motion.
And I think this would be something new that we haven't all seen in writing. So let's let's um vote on the main amendment. I mean, the policy that was um
I think we have to sorry, Christine, maybe you wanna
Can, yeah, um board member Leifer should should make a motion to amend the main motion if if he has one. Sounds like he does.
Before we vote on the whole thing with amendments. Okay. Thank you. All right, Gordon.
Okay, um so I I have the uh proposed amendment, although I'm open to hearing from the people who worked on this more closely than I did. If there's a reason that this isn't a good idea, but my proposal would be to say that the superintendent and board will review the effectiveness of this policy one year after it's been fully implemented, including soliciting input from student organizations. So if there's a reason to not do that, or there's a better way to word it, I'm I'm wide open, but otherwise, that's a that's what I wanted to propose.
There a second to that amendment? Laurel, okay, so Gordon's moved and Laurel seconded, and then we want to talk about it. And I think Laurel, you have your hand up to talk about it. Great.
Uh yes, I like the uh amendment I'm and please help me if I have this exactly wrong or exactly right. I know there's a reporting element in the policy. Is it? Is this asking for a yearly port reporting? I know you said one year, but I'm thinking this could be something that happens regularly, like the city of Eugene does a hate of bias report and such. Um I know this is just racial harassment, but I think it could be helpful to and transparent for us to do this yearly and I'm but I realize that may need not be what you're saying, Gordon, so I don't wanna um derail, take us off the tracks here.
So to Laurel's question, I'd like to see, I think if I I haven't read this again just tonight, I think there is an annual report, but someone who's written, worked on the um the policy, do you wanna let us know?
There there is an annual report, so it's in um it's on the, let's see, under the district responsibilities, section number seven, conduct an annual review of major incidents of racial harassment and report the information annually to the board. So that's one type of review that's already happening. Um another element to maybe be thinking about as you consider this is just the the role of the upcoming um Equity Advisory Committee that it's that is, you know, reconstituted and one of its uh one of its missions is to under state law is to provide advise the board about the educational impacts equity impacts of its policy decisions. And so um that may be something um to just consider at their role um in advising the board on this.
Thank you. Gordon, uh Mary and Alicia. Good.
Thanks. So my intention of this is not was not to create an annual report. And if it makes sense for this to be done by the Equity Committee as opposed to um the Board and Superintendent, that's totally fine with me. What what I'm just thinking is that we're we mostly meeting the staff are making this big but you know, trying to figure out what are the best pieces to put together that can work to to create something that students and staff will really use and that will really be usable. And it would be good to get feedback after a period of time when it's really been fully implemented to hear how is that working? Or are there things that we should tweak from the point of view of the people who we want to um to make it easy for? So that's all I meant. If that if that goes through the Equity Committee as opposed to Superintendent or the Board, that's fine. I just think it'd be good to get that feedback.
Um Mary, you're in the queue next and then Alicia.
Uh thank you. Um I I'm not sure what effectiveness means with regard to this policy. I mean, this is a huge uh set of of uh policy guidance and so forth. So uh review the effectiveness of this policy. I feel like I'm not sure what that exactly means. And um in policy, I I don't believe you should be too prescriptive. There has to be room for administrative discretion um in policy. And uh it would be the board, would it be a seven doing this, or would it be the superintendent? I mean, you know, I just am uncomfortable with the language, especially given that we have an Equity Committee. And I would like to see that body become more established and more involved in this type of uh work. And I don't know that it's the Board's responsibility to to be doing that. I mean, it's the Board's responsibility overall as the superintendents, but I really think tagging this type of feedback and continual improvement process really belongs more appropriately with the Equity Committee than with the Board. And I also uh the one year uh feels really short in many, many ways. Thank you.
So Alicia. Mar- Mary and Gordon, I assume you have your hands down now, right? But Alicia, Alicia, yes.
I want to answer what Alicia says. Let me see.
Yeah, okay, you might keep your hand up because I'm just about ready to surprise the heck out of you. I agree with what Gordon says. Um I know, shame on uh no, actually, I I agree with the uh concept. I'm not a wordsmith or so. Um I I think uh it I but I will say, and I think you're kind of leaning toward this too. I could be wrong, Gordon. I don't think it belongs in this policy, but I also don't want it to be a kind of forgotten. So um so how do we take what you what you want, which I think is important, and it may be a year, it may be eighteen months, and not lose it? Um I I wouldn't vote to put it in the policy uh because it would require like it yearly. I really liked to that you called out. You, the student organizations, I like that we have to figure that out. I think Maya and I have that on our plate with the um with the Equity Committee. Uh so if you if you don't move it forward in this po- in this policy, uh do you trust us? Or Christine, is there something in somewhere we could put it um so that we don't, we don't lose it? Uh and it doesn't get forgotten. Um I hope that makes sense and surprises you. Now, Gordon, go ahead. Tell me what you didn't like about what I said.
I have such respect for you. Um no, and I I appreciate that and it all makes sense. And if you are, I don't, Christine hasn't weighed in, but you know, if you and Maya and Christine think and it makes sense to me also to not have it in the policy, but to have some place saying we're gonna do this. And if you think the right place is for the two of you to to bring it up in the Equity Committee, that's fine with me. And of course, I trust that'll happen.
So I have my hand up next and I I I was pretty much gonna say what Alicia did because um first of all, there are students on the Equity Committee. Second of all, they we they advise us as well as the Superintendent. So I would like to have their input on this for sure because they could go deeper and have a broader perspective. So again, I don't know where you, and I also acknowledge that we do things sometimes and then we never really check back and are accountable for our own work. So that's really important. And figuring out ways to do that is good. So if just talking about it on record, asking Alicia and Maya to make sure that goes to the Equity Committee is good, I'm good with that too. So Mary has her hand up. And then Christine, it looks like you have something to say. No, okay.
Well, uh I I mean, I mean this partly in jest and I mean it in seriousness. If this is something we want to do and accomplish in the next year, next eighteen month, then let's set it as a board goal. And talk about it.
Okay, that's another place we could put it.
That's right.
So but now we're talking about the policy. So the question is, do we vote on this amendment or?
Yes, you gotta vote on it.
Yeah, okay. Gordon.
Oh, I'm sorry. I would like to withdraw the amendment, given the conversation we just had. It seems like it's not necessary.
And Laurel, you were the second. Are you okay with withdrawing it? She's okay. Okay, great. So now we can vote on the policy as it was proposed with the five amendments that have been added. So I'm gonna call for the vote. Ever all in favor of the racial harassment policy ACC as it's written with the five amendments that we approved, raise your hand. I see that this passes unanimously with a seven yes vote. Whoopie. Nice going, everyone. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Christine, and thank you uh the group that worked on this and the Board for hanging in there. I'm excited. Right.
And thanks to the Superintendent for her work on it. And I'm just sorry she's not here to see the vote.
Yes, yes. She will hear about it. Now we're on for items for information. And the first one is to receive an update on the district's response to COVID nineteen, which includes the information about masks. And I think we have Carrie Delft leading on that with Dawn Strong. Yeah, I don't Dawn's with us too. Great.
Thank you, yes. So we have been receiving new information from the state of Oregon over the course of about the past month, including some changing timelines, I specifically regarding face masks in schools. Uh originally, the state had planned to I have that go to a local decision making, starting March thirty-first. They later revised that timeline and then just this week revised it again uh to where that that point is now March eleventh. Uh is the last day uh in which the statewide requirement for face masks in schools and uh other indoor spaces will be in place. So starting March twelfth, that's a Saturday. Uh that will be local decision making for school districts. So uh in addition to our other response to COVID, we've been taking a look at these uh the options in four J and the changing uh conditions of the pandemic. I'm going to share a few slides that came to us from the state. We've selected uh a few of the data slides that they made available and have some other information. I will get those slides up here. There we go. So we want to share with the Board about some changing pandemic trends, just very briefly. This is also information you are seeing elsewhere. I some of the changes in the statewide rules for schools, uh part that is part of the RISL or Ready School Safe Learners Resiliency Framework for schools. Um what that means with our on the ground impacts for schools, what those changes may look like. We have sought and received significant stakeholder input on this particular question. I and then talk about uh our plan for moving forward when this becomes local control. I I know the Superintendent was sorry she couldn't be here to discuss this tonight, but um she I has I was uh having us share that for her. So first, the we have been in a significant surge. We've seen COVID rates I both in schools and in our community go higher than we've seen them anywhere reported on the Omicron variant. I we are looking here at statewide figures, but if you look at uh local and school numbers, they are quite similar uh as well. You see a very similar trend with that. It surged very high, but you will see it's now coming back significantly back down. Uh and if you look at projections, it's expected to um bottom out the curve back to uh more previous normal um and lower beyond that. Uh that same trend is seen in hospitalizations and severity. Um big spike uh that is now dropping rapidly as we move forward. This is a key look at um not the cases, but the estimated immunity in our Oregon population. It's a combination of people who are fully vaccinated, people who have received boosters and the people who have uh recently had a case of COVID and have recovered. We saw huge numbers of our population um becoming infected with the Omicron variant. Uh and it's now estimated I while we don't have exact figures about how long and I how good that immunity is. Um it's estimated that that provides uh some some fairly good immunity for at least about ninety days following infection. Uh so this is essentially a chart of immune of herd immunity. Uh we are here. And the gray is people who have been removed from the susceptible or infected population or have recovered. I and the blue is currently infected and the orange is people who are considered to be particularly susceptible to the virus. People who are not vaccinated, not a recent case. So the CDC has just come out with now uh another new and different way of looking at COVID case rates and uh community levels. Um now focused less on the cases and the quarantines uh and focus more on the impact of severe cases on our hospitals. Um so based on the percent of staff in patient beds that are occupied by COVID nineteen patients and the number of new COVID admissions to hospitals uh for the for the seven day total per one hundred thousand uh residents in a county's population, um they have established low, medium and high community levels and particular recommended preventive strategies uh for individuals and for communities based on that. When levels are low, um that is really returning much more towards a, I suppose, more normal uh things. Um at medium level, specific to masks, the recommendation is that um people who are at higher risk of severe illness, um including people who are immunocompromised, people who uh especially people who are unvaccinated or susceptible, people who are more elderly, I are advised to uh consider masking indoors. And when community levels are high, the recommendation is to wear a mask indoors in public, regardless of whether people are vaccinated or not, including in K twelve schools. Right now, most of the state of Oregon is high, including Lane County. We see here, if you can see my cursor, uh Lane County is here. The yellow is medium and the green, those very sparsely populated eastern Oregon counties right now are low. Um in our area, it's currently high. We have been seeing our case rates uh both in schools and in our county drop significantly. And it's anticipated that the designated community level is also going to drop soon. That is aligned with the new state guidance uh which is changing the requirements for schools in the Ready School Safe Learners Guidance um and changing the requirements for face masks. That has been a statewide mandate, not a decision for local control uh for quite some time. Um right now, face masks have been uh not required outdoors, but they have been required indoors in schools and elsewhere. Starting uh after March eleventh, that will be a local district decision. Um other changes in the guidance include changes in the uh the requirements for quarantine and for contact tracing. Um what the state is finding at this point is after the significant surge I in coronavirus coronavirus cases from the Omicron surge, uh they're finding that uh contact tracing, close contact tracing and quarantining of people who have been determined to be exposed to a case is not currently an effective method of preventing the spread. Uh and they are causing that uh the contact tracing uh for schools and statewide. Um however, and and the face masks become a local decision. However, a wide variety of other layered prevention strategies remain in place, including the requirement for staff to be vaccinated. Um and where staff who are not vaccinated and have an agreement in place uh for for preventive measures, including masks, those would remain in place. Um that doesn't necessarily change. Uh if if the overall rule does continue to try to keep distance between students, having If the overall rule does continue to try to keep distance between students, having increased hand hygiene methods are increased ventilation that's in place, the availability of regular COVID testing. And the requirement that anyone with COVID or presumed positive case of COVID isolate from others for five days after that begins. And also the notification of the cohort, while detailed contact tracing is no longer expected to be conducted. It is recommended and 4G has been doing, as some districts have not. This is not a change for us. The district has been notifying, continuing to notify families when there is a case identified in their student's class bus route in a known group the student is in, families are notified because while their student isn't recently until this point, they've not been considered to be exposed. And at this point, the detailed contact tracing will not be done for that. The student isn't considered to be necessarily exposed and susceptible to COVID, but it's important information for families to have as they're making their decisions about how to proceed, particularly if they have highly susceptible individuals in their family. So that that notification has been continuing as everyone who is a parent in 4G knows. Probably everybody has received one of those notices by now. And Dawn, Dawn Strong is here to talk about what that may look like on the ground in schools, what these changes are looking like in local scene.
Yeah, thank you, Carrie. I think just looking just kind of talk about what we're seeing in schools. If you remember the last time we talked, or it could have been a couple of board meetings ago, due to the surge that we were having in Lane County and the impacts on our own schools, we were not doing contact tracing because we did not have the ability to contact trace. We had so many positive cases. So if you remember, in consultation with Lane County Public Health, we stopped in January doing detailed contact tracing. So we have not been doing that. Another change came shortly thereafter from Ready Schools and ODE stating that we would only do contact tracing that occurred at lunchtime. And so right now, the changes that they're talking about are are things that have already been going on in our district. So what what it would look like based on the information that Carrie has shared tonight and what we learned today from ODE? If we have a student who tests positive, they will continue to notify the school. We still will contact the family to make sure that we can identify what those isolation dates are or our or our employees. It's the same for employees and for both and our students. We would determine that five day isolation period, then they would return at the end of the five day isolation period as long as they are feeling better and as long as they've been fever free for 24 hours. That is not a new practice for us. That is something that we have continued to do. What would change, and it's not a new change for us, but there's not detailed contact tracing. So the small change that they put into place, which said that you need to contact trace at lunch, that goes away. And we have very little of that going on anyway, because of the way that our schools are set up and the way that they have other mitigation strategies that are already in place. So contact tracing is not required. We no longer have quarantine, and that would be a change. So if we currently, and this would really impact our employees more than students. So if I am positive in my household and another household member lives with me, what we would do is right now is we would put that employee in quarantine for the five days of my positive and five more days of their own. That will stop. There will no longer be quarantine. So if you live with a positive person, you do your five days. The person who's living with you, as long as they remain asymptomatic, will continue doing what it is that they do. So the biggest message is, is either you're positive, or if you're sick, you stay home. If you've been exposed, we don't really consider that an exposure, so you keep coming to school. So we really are doing what we're doing right now, anyway. Well, as Carrie said, we'll still contact families of a positive. We have continued to do this all along. It's not a new practice for us. We do that if we have a positive in a classroom. We also do that if we have a positive in a bus situation. And we have also done that through our athletic programs. So all of those things would continue to be the same because we'll continue to notify people. So it really is not a huge change for us. What is a huge change is the numbers of cases that we're seeing. If you look at our dashboard right now, you'll see that we have two positive employees and we currently have seventeen positive students. If you remember in January, in February, we were way in the hundreds with our kids. And we were well into sometimes averaging over three hundred reports from families per day regarding students who were either positive or who were living with a positive household member. Today, we had nine submissions from those families as opposed to the over three hundred that we were having for a while there. We only had three positive students today. We had no positive staff members today. And we only had four submissions on staff members who have been exposed to other people who are positive or who may be experiencing symptoms. So it isn't going to change a lot of the practice that we're doing. When you think about having thirty four school sites, and that would include Echo and our downtown LCC Center, the fact that we've had three positive students today in all of those sites where we were looking at. If you remember, we talked about one of our high schools having fifteen positives in one day, which is why we just did not have the ability to contact trace. We're down to three positive students in our district. So we are continuing to see that trajectory. Lane County, their highest day on January 31st, they had over thirteen hundred positive cases. Yesterday, they had sixty one positive cases. So when you look at the fact that Lane County says that we're still in a high risk area, there are many things that they're considering, including those hospitalizations, but we are seeing a dramatic drop. And we are really right now where we were before school started in terms of the numbers of positive cases that we are seeing. So this is a dramatic change for us, and we see a lot of positive things. We don't anticipate that we're going to see a lot going up. Carrie referenced the numbers of positive people that we've seen. And if you go back to that slide and we took out all those great people, we said, you guys don't belong here anymore because you've all had COVID. We've taken out a huge number of our staff and our students because of those positives. So we really are getting down to those very, very low numbers. Carrie, any additional information or questions from our board?
Thank you. I think you covered our key updates. I can go back to our next steps here. Some important information we want to share as we're taking a look at this. I'm sorry, I need to get back to the slideshow. There we are. Sorry about that. So in we have reached out to our stakeholders to ask for input. This is a pretty critical change coming mid-year and coming with less notice than had been anticipated. So we're really appreciative to our employee associations for reaching out to those that they represent directly. The district has reached out to students and parents as well. Hearing the note from a student or one student representative earlier is that it's hard to sometimes weigh in when you don't know all of the details of a plan. That is the the nature of it. We understand, but we did receive a tremendous amount of community input. First, stakeholder input from our employee groups. These these surveys went out through the Eugene Education Association, teachers and licensed staff, Oregon School Employees Association, representing classified staff and managers, administrators, professionals, and supervisors group. Asking our employees whether their preference was to lift the requirement for face masks for everybody universally in schools as soon as that was allowed, which would be now March 12th. Some of that initial question was being asked was a later date. Whether they would prefer to base that using local COVID data to determine when the conditions are safe enough to lift the mask mandate, not necessarily immediately immediately on that first day. Or whether they preferred to maintain the universal mask mandate for indoor spaces through the end of the school year. And you can see here, there's some differences between the employee groups. I should note that the information from the classified staff group, I would classify that as preliminary. They have not had very long to respond. I know they've received a good number of responses, but certainly not from all of our classified staff. We understand from the EA that more than seven hundred of our teachers and specialists responded. So that's a a large group of staff. So the green is to make masks optional as soon as possible. Yellow is to make them optional when safe, and red is to keep the keep masks required through the remainder of the year. In all employee groups, majority preferred the one of the optional options, but the balance of that varied quite a bit, including, in fact, a more than fifty percent majority of the classified staff responding so far. Hoping to make masks optional as soon as possible and smaller numbers half that number in the other employee groups in that response. The question, because these were different surveys from different sources, the question was asked a little bit differently, reaching to the same same basic conclusions. The stakeholder input from students and families. I will note, we've had a tremendous response in just a short period of time. Families have been waiting to be able to share. We have been wanting to share this information about how they feel about this with us. I think because we received tremendous amount of input quickly and have continued to receive that. So as of shortly before the board meeting this evening, we have received ten thousand eight hundred and sixty six responses from parents, guardians, and students. In fact, close to three thousand of those responses are from students, which is huge input from students, which is great. Directly from them. This is, these are fairly complex graphs, but if you are looking at the the big picture, what this is showing here is on the left, we have the mask. It would be, the chart is showing whether the respondent would prefer that masks be required indoors at school and on buses or optional. Green is optional. Red is required. On the right, we're asking if masks are made optional, the person felt the change should be made as soon as possible, which would be for schools, that would be as early as Monday, March 14th, which is the first school day after that statewide mandate lifts and that's local control. And one option was to say after spring break is a natural change point. So that would be on or after March 28th. Or when the COVID-19 community level changes, currently it's high, when it changes or after it changes to low or medium. And the, yes?
Can I just ask, so are the colors, which which one shows which?
On the right. So on the left, red
Thank you.
is required, keep them on, and green is optional. People can take off their masks in schools. And on the right, the, oh, and I see here, I apologize, there's a, there's a key, and it seems to have disappeared. So we'll add that back in. The on the right, the green is to make masks optional as soon as possible, as early as March 14th. The orange is to make that change after spring break. And the yellow is to make that change when the data, when the data shifts in our community level drops down from high. So what you'll see is the the different concentric circles there, that center pie chart shows the total of all responses. And we've laid it out this way to to share that while there are some differences, it actually is quite quite similar in the preponderance responses in each of these areas. So what you see there is next out from the all responses in the center, you see elementary families that students and parents together, middle school families, high school families, and then as we get towards the outside, parents and students. The the right hand side is the same order for ease of reading that. So what you see is that it's not quite two thirds. But sixty four, about sixty four percent is in favor of having masks be optional indoors and about thirty six percent in favor of having masks be required indoors. And regarding the timing, pretty solidly about half in each group, a little more, a little less, and some of it depending on the group. I prefer that to be as soon as possible. About forty percent, I would like to see that happen when the COVID community level drops below high. And about ten percent, I heard that that happened some point after spring break on or after March 28th. And we have a little more information to share here, but I see.
Can we take Maya's question and then see the rest of the information?
Carrie, I appreciate the this this feedback. And I just want to know for the community's sake, if this will be available on our website sooner than later, so families can can have an idea and and staff also, because I think this is this is very compelling. So I appreciate the and even though it doesn't have a key, I would love it if it had a key. I like these circular graphs. This is a new thing for me.
Thank you. I apologize. There is a key and it is missing from the slide, so we will add that back before we share it elsewhere. It certainly makes it easier to read when you have the key.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you. I thought maybe it was about this slide circle. Yeah.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Were there any other questions about the data of the responses we received from our community? Those weren't the only questions we asked. We did ask ask a few other questions, but this was the the key of what what your preferences are for masks.
I had a question of why we didn't separate kids and buses from in large school rooms, because it seems like a very different space.
We didn't ask the question separately as to whether people would prefer to have them on in one setting and off in another. There has been a federal requirement for face masks to be worn on public transportation, including school buses, in place for quite some time. That is now being lifted in Oregon. It will continue to be in place through March 11th, the same as schools. And and so we're looking at this as an overall question, but it's a it's a good question. It is a different kind of setting. Students are not necessarily any closer to each other on buses, but they know they may be. We did not ask that separate question, so I can't share data with you on that.
Okay, the last, the last thing I had saw that it was still for Oregon, it was still going to be in place on public transportation and for flights and in hospitals. So it did that change like like at the beginning of
That's, that's probably. I can't answer beyond schools. Our focus has been on schools, and so I just am not confident of the response on outside of school buses. It will be local decision making for school buses on the same timeline as schools. I, it's a good question. We'll look into what it is for other things. Some of our students take public transportation on LTD rather than our school buses, and they would have to follow the rules that are in place for that system.
So, okay, okay. Well, just one last thing is part of this. So it's possible if while we're making decisions around this, we can say we'd like to follow the mandate for public transportation since small confined area as opposed to a larger area, correct?
So this is the, well, so for two things, one is you say when we, as in the district is making decisions. Yes, that could be made differently if the board wanted to take some special action that isn't required and to do something different than what the district would otherwise be planning to do. That could also be done. That could be different for buses versus schools. But the the mandate for public transportation as it applies to school buses is lifting. It is no longer in place starting March 12th. I can't answer the question about airplanes. We're just more focused on schools and I don't have that information immediately.
Gordon, oh. Yeah, I didn't ask about airplane.
Thank you. I don't know if this is knowable, but I'm trying to get a sense of the the projection for when we're likely to to go from high to medium. My, the data I'm looking at has that we were like in late January at a hundred ninety five cases per hundred thousand or now at fifteen or sixteen and mediums is at ten, is something like, like, does it look like, you know, even for the people who say we want to wait till medium that that's that might be in a week or two?
We anticipate that is coming soon. Of course, can't provide an exact date, but but the case rates have dropped substantially. The hospitalization rates have dropped substantially. The the bed use rates have dropped substantially. That's what the this rating is now based on. Don't have an exact date prediction for you, and it's possible that Dr. Strong has additional information that she'd like to share on that front, but we expect it is likely coming quite soon.
Yeah, they they give us new numbers, Gordon, every week, and so it's it's only updated on a weekly basis. But based on our meeting with Lane County Public Health last week, we would anticipate that that will happen in the next week to two weeks if our numbers continue the trajectory that they're in right now.
That's my understanding, too. Laurel.
Thank you.
I forgot to take my hand down. Thank you.
Great. Okay. Any other questions for Dawn or Carrie?
So we have, do we have decisions to make around this?
That's what I was just going to follow up with. Good question, Laurel.
So moving on, if there are
So moving on, if there are no more questions or comments about the data, the stakeholder input that we've sought out and received. Moving forward, given that our case rates are lowering, we are expecting the community level to drop. Not knowing the exact date, but expecting that to be quite soon. Others are anticipating that as well. While it is mixed among our employee groups and our families, it's clear that stakeholder input favors making mask use optional in schools and on buses, while it's not unanimous by any means. And our neighbor and school districts also are aligned in, they're making mask, mask use optional coming soon. The superintendent is, is looking toward a shift to making mask use optional as of Monday, March 14th. I, and wanted to, unfortunately can't be here to discuss that with the school board and, and agree with thoughts of student. But is looking towards that being in place, starting, it's not next week, but it's the following week. And it's the final few days before spring break. The third trimester for middle and high school starts on March 28th, right after spring break. And those families have been invited to request changes between online and onsite learning. Those changes have been able to be made at the term change throughout this year, which is a substantial impact that we adjusted to each time. We also recognize that moving towards changing face mask rules mid-year, when not all families are ready for that, is a significant impact for families and changes families thinking in some cases about whether they are comfortable having their student attend school onsite. So we do plan to open up that opportunity to request a change between online and onsite learning again. Maybe a short window would be in place starting after spring break. And we may have to make some staffing shifts if the numbers are significant, so that will be a good push to be prepared to do that. But, but that is something we anticipate may be needed. We asked families to indicate whether they thought that they would want to make a change if there, if, if there were a change in mask rules in schools. And we did hear from some hundreds of families that they did have an interest in making that change. We don't know that all of them will actually make that change, or whether there's any duplication where we have two parents or three parents of the same child, for example. Or a student responding along with their parent, but we know that there will be movement and we need to be prepared for that and offer the opportunity that wouldn't otherwise be offered. And then other things that are continuing without change is that we'll, as, as noted before, we'll be continuing for the students and staff. Symptoms or a case of COVID can't come to school. They need to isolate, stay away from others so that they're not bringing that case to school when they know about it. Testing will, will be continued to be offered to help identify more of those cases. We have seen quite a number, especially with this recent surge of asymptomatic or very low symptomatic students and staff being caught by that routine testing. And we will continue to notify families when appropriate case is identified. We had anticipated that it might, that it likely would increase the number of students who would need to quarantine because of what's considered to be exposure to a case of COVID at school. However, with those rules changing, that is no longer the case that we anticipate larger numbers of students having to quarantine. So that is what we are looking at going forward, and I know the superintendent is interested in hearing board members' questions and comments on that going forward.
So, um, it is time for a discussion. So I was just going to respond to Laurel's question about is there action we need to take? And it, we, we do not need to take a vote or take action. This is the recommendation from the superintendent. It's within the policy and within the authority. And I did, I, I didn't check with every district in the state, but I do know that all the Lane County districts, including Bethel and Springfield, those were just decisions made by the superintendent and cabinet, so recommendations.
So that decision, there are not decisions that need to be made by the board, but if there were a desire to take some action that were different from what was planned or take some action affirming the superintendent's response, certainly that's something that the, the board could do by motion and approval. But there is no action required of the board.
Mary?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mary, you're muted.
Mary, you're muted.
Sorry, 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 sorry. The bottom of the screen drops off. Anyway, it doesn't matter. I, I would, I'm glad that the superintendent has recommended that and I am supportive of that recommendation from her. And I'm, I'm sorry she can't be here tonight because I'm just thinking back on this whole COVID adventure we've been on. Almost two years to the day, it was March 11th when we had our last in-person unmasked board meeting. And then we went into, you know, shut down, which we thought would be two weeks, and then it's, you know, been two, two years later, basically, we're still the same. And then a year ago, we were actually talking about the hybrid model and getting kids back in school, so I know it's been a long haul and I'm, I'm glad that, that we're at a point where we can making mask optional. I was at schools today, as a matter of fact, and there, that was the one question, other than pepperoni or cheese pizza, that I was asked is what about the mandates? And so I said, I don't know, but I, but I think if people want to wear them, they still can. I, I know as long as I continue to, to volunteer in the kitchen there with my health concerns and the fact that I'm serving food, I will continue to wear the face mask. At my option. So, so I'm really happy that this is happening and I want to thank the staff for all their work around this, especially Dawn. She knows it back and forth, up and down, and I appreciate her expertise. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Laurel. You're up next, Gordon.
Yeah, yes. So my proposal is that we go with most of the superintendent's recommendation and we continue to have masking on buses until that is also, that is lifted by the rest of Oregon. Closed confined space and I, I just am not comfortable that we're going to be, and we do know a lot of kids that are some of our sped kids are on these buses that have, I don't know all the medical terms, immune compromise, I didn't say that right. I just would like them not to be the only ones who like have to mask and everybody else is, just does what they want. I, that'll be happening in school, but I, I would say on buses, I think it's important that because of the confined space, that staff and students continue to mask, and there's a reason that they're asking for this still in Oregon. And I think we can continue this on buses.
Thank you. Gordon?
Thank you. I, I hadn't thought about the bus issue, but I'm, I'm convinced by Laurel. And other than that, I would, I would support the recommendation on the 14th. And if other people feel similarly, I actually think it would be good for us to vote a motion of approval, only because this has been a contentious issue in the community, and I think if we're in agreement with the superintendent, it would be good for us to, to let that be known publicly and not have her, have to stand out in public as the only person who made this decision.
That would be great. We, I would, I think we could entertain that. I'm seeing some head nuts. What I'd like to suggest, though, I think Laurel, you bring up a really good point, and we didn't have the information. So if, you know, if our state is requiring masks on buses, I guess I just want a little more information on that. That sounds like a, a really reasonable idea, but I think I just would like to have a little more information about it. And we will meet on the ninth, so we could vote, or we could vote to approve everything, but wanting more information about buses. That's another way to, to go. Dawn, thank you for your hand up. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. I, I do believe, and I, I just wanted to clarify, so thank you, because what I heard Laurel saying is she wants to follow the state of Oregon. And I do think we need to get additional information, because I actually believe that we are changing, there is a date that the state is going to be doing away with that as well. And I believe that's coming up. I do also want to address two things regarding buses. I would tell you that we have not seen spread on our buses throughout this entire pandemic. And we have a couple of reasons. Number one, a lot of our kids don't ride on the bus for extended periods of time. I would tell you, just like schools, there are certainly some cases that we've seen, that we would say that probably could have occurred there. But our special education students, remember, a lot of those students that are really medically fragile or compromised do have special transportation is provided, and so we have those kids on a limited number of students on those buses with EAs and a bus driver as well. So just, we can gather additional information to provide what you need, but, and I understand those concerns. I think we just remember that our kids are not on the buses for extended periods of time, the majority of those kids who are riding. And we will be having them at bus stops outside without masks. So something that we can provide you additional information for next week, for sure.
And I believe it is showing here now, I, I pulled up a slide from the state of Oregon with their announcement. This came from this morning, noting that the, the state policies don't change the federal requirements, as mentioned, which, which have been requiring masks on public transit, but the CDC no longer requires wearing masks on buses and vans operated by school systems. So school buses and the early learning buses. That was lifted February 25th, but in Oregon, that's continuing through March 11th.
So after March 11th, it will be lifted?
Correct.
These magical dates.
Yeah.
Also, the, maybe not everybody's on the bus a long time, but several, a lot of kids are. My son took a 45-minute bus ride every day, twice a day, so, and so that, that's I, there are a lot of kids that are on the bus for a long time, so thanks.
Yeah, and, and I, I would agree with that, Laurel. I, we have, I think one of the things that also that we need to think about is we have to look at what that, we're looking at our employees, so if we're, we're going to have all of our mask mandates lifted except on buses, we have to really think about that, because that puts another burden on our drivers. And if they're going to be monitoring who's wearing masks and who's not wearing masks, that creates a different situation for them. So I do think just when we're looking from an employee perspective, and we want our drivers to be focusing on driving versus wearing masks or not wearing masks, it will create some conflict, and those are just things we might want to consider or think about. You know, when we're, what we're asking bus drivers to do. So I, with respect, and I, I appreciate that, because I do know that there are kids that ride longer than other kids. But just something for us to think about with regards to how we would enforce that and, and the responsibility that that places on drivers as well.
That, that's a good, good thing to remember. Thanks.
So do we want to take an action of support of the superintendent's recommendation tonight? In the full recommendation or everything but the busing and get more information about busing?
Oh, Carrie gave us the more information, so.
So that, there wasn't any other information people needed or wanted?
As far I, I remove my part, I, I mean, we all know these numbers are magical in the sense of hope it works, right? That's where we're at. So yeah, I definitely will, I don't think we should just say the superintendent's making these choices and that we are all behind this decision and the work that the staff has done. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurel. So we have three people to make comments, Mary, Alicia, and then Maya.
Yes, I believe we should offer a motion and support, and I think we should do it tonight. And I'm not sure where the other people have their hands up, but I would make the motion if you want, want me to, or we can come back to the other people. Or go to the other people, then I would be glad to make one, because I think it's the sooner the better and it gives clarity to the community. And it says, hey, we're maybe seeing the light at the end of the tunnel, and it's not a train coming on us, coming at us head on. Thanks.
So Mary, I'm going to take the other comments, but come back to you to make the motion. Okay? Alicia?
I was going to make the motion, so I'll wait for Mary.
Maya?
I wasn't going to make the motion, so I'll say my comment. I, 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 I just want to say, you know, seeing all those numbers, there, there's clearly still a, a large number of people who are nervous. And I just want to honor that and say that I see you and that I understand. I'm nervous also. I'm ready to move forward. I'm so ready to move forward. I have two 4J kids who are, are also ready to move forward. And, but I, but I do want to acknowledge that there's going to be some folks who are, who are, who, who might be disappointed with this decision. And, and I want to say that I am so happy to see in part of that bulk of sentences about what we're going to be pushing forward, the opportunity for families to be able to still come back and revisit their decision as to whether they want to switch into online. That makes me feel really, it makes me feel a lot better about, about the, the parts of those graphs that were hesitant to move in this direction. So I really, I, I really appreciate that component of this decision tremendously. And I'm, it was, it was one of my questions to ask, and it was really, it made me really happy to see that on there. So I know that you, I'm pretty sure you said, Carrie, that this will be on the website. Is that right? That these graphs, because they're, they're pretty compelling, and I think that, that when you're part of a community, which is what doing this mitigation work is, it's, it's being part of a community, seeing the, the feelings of your fellow community members is, is really important. And I think that that will help inform folks who don't have the time to listen to all of these conversations to see where we got our, our plan put in place.
Thank you, Maya. Gordon?
Thank you. So I, I would support the resolution, and if the, I, I don't think we can maintain mask mandates on buses passed when the federal and state government have dropped them. But I did want to ask, and maybe this is for you, Dawn, about students, I guess, or staff who are particularly medically vulnerable. What, what is the option or, or options at their disposal? And, you know, partly I'm also thinking like, some of the students who are medically fragile are also not really suited to say, oh, just do everything online. And so other than saying go online if you're, if you're worried, are, are there other options that we'll have for students in that situation? You're muted, Dawn.
Oh, gosh. Okay, thank you. Sorry. I, I can't address all of that. The one thing I do want to talk about with our medically fragile students, though, is we do offer, and we have been working really closely with our life skills families, our life skills teachers, administrators. With any kind of a positive, we still provide testing, and a lot of our students can't do onsite testing, especially with our life skills students. It's easier for their families to test at home, so we do have the ability. We have the test kits that we send home with our families. So if we know that there's a positive in a life skills classroom or a student who is medically fragile and that may be impacted, we still are contacting the families. They're oftentimes notified either by the teacher, by the administrator. And we send those test kits home, and we continue to provide them support through testing. So it's one of the things that we're not just saying and throwing up our hands and saying, yep, no more contact tracing, we're done. We still provide those supports, and the people in the buildings know who their medically fragile students are. And so we are continuing to provide that kind of support, kind of, you know, frontline support. So in terms of what other educational opportunities there are, that's not something I can respond to. But I can say that we continue to provide and offer testing both onsite and with the take home to our students and their families and our staff, and, and we're still doing that with both of our tests.
Thank you. Thank you, Dawn. I also want to just acknowledge that there are significant number of people that are nervous. And I think as some of my fellow board members said, it's a number, you know, everyone's just sort of crossing their fingers and hopeful this will work. But it does seem like the right decision at this point in time, and I really, really appreciate giving parents a choice to go either way. I mean, I think we're going to have some parents who are going to send their, their students back to school and some that might not want to. So I really appreciate going that extra step to give parents that option. And to also remind people that it's optional, you can still wear a mask, you know, in your student, that does provide that person with some protection anyhow, and possibly a good deal. So I'm, I'm appreciative of that. So I think, I don't see any more hands up. I'm going to ask Mary to make a motion.
Unless Martina wants to, but, okay, okay, then. I move to affirm the recommendations of the superintendent regarding the wearing of masks and other COVID protocols as per the directive of March 2nd, 2022, and I'm referring to the, the document that we saw, that the points in that document. If that makes sense. I don't know if Carrie wants to pop that up again, but I'm just moving to affirm that and.
Does anyone need to see it again? Okay, do we have a second? Right, Martina seconded, so Mary moved, Martina seconded, and do we have any more discussion? Um, and do we have any more discussion on this? I don't see any hands up, so I'm gonna, oh, Laurel.
I just thought it, the, the, an affirmation to say, and I don't know if this is added or I just say this now, but that, like what Maya and, um, you said Judy, there's a lot of people that are worried about this. And we see and hear that and that, and we are using the best information we have from state and local governments to make this choice.
Should we affirm that in the, is that just a statement that goes on record or is that an amendment?
Does this feel like it's important to?
Acknowledge.
Knowledge.
Isn't the recommendation that masking be optional? From the superintendent?
Yes.
That's why I asked to have that back up again, so.
It is optional.
And, and it just seems like that making, affirming that is optional. That's, I, I think that's the point that Laurel was trying to make, I, I guess, I.
Great. Okay, then I'll call the, thank, I saw Laurel nod, so thank you. Um, all those in favor, raise your hand.
Turn my camera off.
I see, um, seven affirmative votes. So the, the, the motion passes 100%. Thank you. And thank you superintendent and thank you staff for putting all the work into this. And there's a lot of work ahead, so. Uh, Alicia, you have your hand up.
I do, and I appreciate it. According to my clock, it's almost 10 o'clock.
Yeah.
We've got quite a bit, uh, left on the agenda. So I'm wondering if there's some things we can move to next week. Cause you know, we needed the time for these two things. Laurel's gonna, we're gonna lose Laurel. She's, she's probably into the next day where she is.
Definitely into the next day. So, um, Alicia.
Yeah.
Well, I was, I was gonna move that. Go ahead.
I'll leave you alone then. Thanks.
No, we were going to suggest, and I said this earlier in the agenda, that the two items for information that were left, the KPI finishing hearing about them and the CTE report get moved to the next meeting. And that we just go to our item for action that was on, um, the agenda. Gordon, do you, do you have a comment about that?
I was, unless somebody feels differently, I also think maybe the personnel things that we put outside items for action, we're just delaying a week right to our next meeting.
Well, I think, I'm thinking we should, because that was an item for action, we should vote on those tonight.
Okay.
Yeah. That's good. So we're moving the other two off and we'll move these two on. I mean, keep them on. Okay, so, um, we had two items off the consent agenda. Mary?
Well, I heard Alicia making a, a suggestion that we, you know, we delay those, but maybe we could take a five-minute break or so? It's, it's a long time to sit for, for some of us, so.
I apologize, Alicia. I didn't.
I don't know.
Were you, were you, um, suggesting we delay those two? Uh, uh, and Gordon, is that?
No, I was suggesting exactly what you were doing. Sorry, uh, to confuse you. It's just what you said, Judy. I'm fine. Everything's good.
So.
I'm good too.
Okay, um, I'm going to, Maya's question, and then we'll take a five-minute break and then come back and do that. Okay? Maya?
Um, I, it, I'm not in Gordon's heads. I apologize. And Gordon, I don't mean to put words in your mouth. Um, but it seems as if Gordon asked to pull those from the agenda. It's gonna have the possibility of taking some time. Um, so I, I would, I would suggest moving those, um, till next time personally.
I believe there might be some time sensitivity to them. So, um, I'm, I, and they were pulled from the consent agenda. So, on, so that puts them in for item for action because they were on item for action, so.
No, I understand that, that part of it. I'm just, I, I was just lending support to the idea of, um, moving them till next time.
Apparently there is a time sensitivity for at least the, the big personnel ones. So do you, Mary, do you want to say something?
I was just going to ask for clarification if there was indeed a time sensitivity to that. Uh, it seems like maybe some of the more standard ones, the renewal of the, of the, it, it transfer from a probationary status to regular status, that could be delayed, but I agree that the, the bigger issues probably need to get done now because they are time sensitive. However, I, I feel badly taken this type of, and having this discussion with the superintendent not being able to be here tonight. But maybe, uh, maybe Karen Hardener or Christine could weigh in on the necessity to, to deal with those action items tonight. I just don't know. Thank you.
Do you want to do that before we take a break? Have, ask them to weigh in? Okay, maybe Christine or Karen Harden or whoever. Great. Thank you, Christine.
Sure. So, um, you know, the deadline is March 15th for non-renewing or non-extending any, um, any staff who are licensed staff members. And so that's really the, the parameter. Um, no non-extensions are recommended. And so, um, I mean, there is, basically you, you've got some time in the event that there were, I, and I, I, um, I don't believe I can advise you on an, on a non-extension, um, without more information.
Thank you. Thank you.
Karen, did you have something to add? Alicia?
Jude, let's take a five-minute break and come back and do these. They've been hanging out there long enough.
My recommendation is to, yes. Okay. Five minutes, it's 10 o'clock. At 10:05, we'll come back and do these two items. So are we ready? Okay. I was gonna ask. Great. So we have two personnel actions, right? One was in the packet for when it first went out. So why don't we take them one at a time? And I think, um, we pulled the first one that was in there. And I don't know how to differentiate between the two, but I think Gordon, you had wanted to pull one of the, the items off of that, the Brooke Wagner.
Yes, the, so this is the, the first of the, of the two things that we had listed, which is, um, I have it on page 14 of the packet titled.
Yes.
Approve Personnel Actions. So, um, I guess I would, should I make my, I can make my motion and then explain it or? I mean, my.
Pardon, I think we first have to make a motion to, uh, to, um, to approve this item and then we can have debate and then we can move to amend that.
Thank you.
If I have my Robert's rules, right? So I, I'm ha- more than happy to just do that in this moment and say I move approval of, uh, the item entitled approved personnel actions.
And do we have?
Second.
Okay, so Martinez moved and Gordon seconded. Okay, now it's time for discussion. So Gordon, you are up first and then Laurel.
Is that the second item or the first item?
The first, the first action item that is on page 14 in the packet.
Okay, because I, all right. I'll, I'll look up, look up in the packet. No problem.
It was the first one that went out with the packet last week, so.
So, uh, I would like to propose an amendment, which is, um, to approve everything here except for item one, which is the appointment of Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, uh, Dr. Brooke Wagner, and hold that. To, I guess I need a second and then I can explain. If there is a second, then I can explain.
There is a second for Gordon's amendment? A Laurel is seconding.
Okay.
Gordon, you get to speak first and then Laurel.
Thank you. Um, we, we talked about this fairly extensively at an earlier public meeting and I don't think there's a need to repeat that discussion. I want to make clear that this has nothing to do with Dr. Wagner's qualifications for this job and also nothing to do with Intern- uh, Interim Superintendent Vanderkar's judgment of Dr. Wagner's qualifications. We received a letter from 17 elementary school principals lauding Dr. Wagner's, quote, "ability to bring focus, equity, and vision to our instructional team" and quote, "to be student-centered, decisive, and caring", concluding that, quote, "Dr. Wagner is the perfect choice to take on this role." So nothing I'm saying here is meant to take away from any of that. The issue I have is just that I believe the timing is unfortunate and that this should either be maybe a temporary one-year appointment or that the appointment itself should be, um, held until after the superintendent's search is concluded. We've all said we want to have a genuinely open search process. And I think that even assuming this was not the intention, that it's likely to have the unintended effects of discouraging some applicants. And that's the opposite, I think, of what everybody wants to do. So my, my intention in making this motion is that we would then ask, uh, Interim Superintendent Vanderkar to talk with leadership about a way to proceed with this that is respectful of the superintendent, respectful of Dr. Wagner, and can also avoid even the unintended perception of discouraging outside applicants for the position. Thank you.
Oh, sorry, Laurel.
Yes, um, I agree with everything Gordon said around this. I also, um, um, in our work that we've doing, we're doing about diversity, equity, and inclusion. And that includes staff and that includes our hiring practices. And that includes that we have transparent and open, um, way for people to reach the highest levels in our organization. That didn't happen. That was, those doors were slammed shut when this happened. And so it's very important, let, while I agree absolutely with Gordon, everything I've heard about Brooke is amazing. And I would love for that to happen in a way that says that is transparent and open and that other people have a chance for the position. Then there's no problem and it's her position, fair and square. And the way this was done, it is, it was not done in an equitable way. And the word equity means that, and if a, um, equity lens was used on this, you would see whose, whose voice, who was missing from this decision? It wasn't, it wasn't done. So I would really love for this to be, um, something more open and inclusive. And that's what our district is working for, towards and needs to happen. And so, um, I am agreeable to either a one-year temporary appointment, as Gordon said, or for it to be, um, to go out to, um, what's the word? To go out to, to, I can't think of words. Somebody help me.
A public to be advertised, uh, uh, open, an open position.
A posted, a posted position. Thank you so much, Judy. All right. Thank you.
Thank you for hanging in so late. Um, okay, uh, we have Maya and Mary. I'm going to let everyone comment once and then we're going to call the question because we spent a whole time. Uh, Christine?
First, I want to caution the board against comments that are evaluative of the superintendent or that are critical or furor at this meeting, particularly because she is not here to respond. And, um, she has the right to have evaluative feedback in an executive session if that is her wish. So I just want to caution the board, uh, as a whole about that. Thank you.
That, that's the concern. Maybe we should wait till the ninth. That is before the 15th.
I think we had a whole session with her, so I think we can.
We didn't have a whole session of, around this. We just discussed it. There was no discussion.
We had a work session and, and everyone spoke and we, we did. We heard from, um, council, we reviewed the laws and board policies. We looked at past practices. The superintendent actually spoke and we all had opportunities to comment, so. That, and, and that was related to this issue, so. I'm going to take Maya's, got her hand up, so.
So to follow up on what Laurel just said and what Christine just said, we did, we had a, we had a work session, so we did have long conversations. And, um, I really, I'm, I'm sensitive to not, um, cross the line that Christine just said. Not necessarily my comments, but anybody who has things to say. So it might, it might be worthwhile to, to have this conversation in the executive session. Um, as Christine, um, has indicated that there's, there's some tricky territory here. I, um, this is really, this is a really hard question. I, um, I, like Gordon started off, I, I have, um, high esteem for Dr. Wagner. I, I think that, um, the, the problem I have with the situation we're in is that, um, not, it's not about the who, it's about the how. And it leaves us in a position, just as we just voted to express, um, support and, 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 and appreciation for the, for the COVID policy that we're about to put in place. I would, I would like to be able to, without hesitation, um, support this appointment. And not because of, again, because of who it is, but because I, I, I think that under the circumstances that we're facing, it, it's crucial that, that the steps that had been put in place for the prior appointment would be replicated, um, with this one. I, I, I'm not sure. I'm not really, I'm just placing my, 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 my discomfort and my disappointment that this is happening in a way that we can't all just immediately be like, yes, this is, this is the right thing. And not, again, not because of the person, but because of how it happened. So that's, that's where I sit with this. And, and I think that Gordon's suggestion of, of, um, maintaining the position as an interim position might be the best solution. Um, because I don't think that time-wise, opening it up and having interviews is, is, um, is as appealing or maybe even as feasible, so.
Thank you. Mary?
Where my hand? Um, I just have to say, I believe this is a broad or, an overreach by the powers of the board and really inappropriate. Uh, it's micromanaging at the grossest level. It's the superintendent's, uh, team, the superintendent can hire whom he or she wishes to hire. And we should not be involved in, in this in any way other than approving the contract. If we have faith in our leadership, which I think we do, we've all expressed that we have faith in, in the superintendent, Superintendent Vanderkar, as well as Dr. Wagner, then why would we undermine them at this critical point? Uh, it, it's just, it, I, it's unfathomable to me that we feel like we need to micromanage this level. We just had a presentation from Alma earlier this evening about the need to attract candidates and good candidates, even to the point where they were recommending that the board. even to the point where they were recommending that the board hire a PR firm because we want to make the district attractive. If any candidate is out there and serious about applying for this position, you can bet they're going to watch this and they're going to say, wait, they're going to tell me who I can and can't hire? Why would I apply there? It just doesn't make any sense, undermining the superintendent before the superintendent is even hired. And then I appreciate that, you know, trial and error is good, but this isn't the place where you do trial and error. So a one-year appointment doesn't seem to make any sense to me. So what, what happens in a year? Who's going to apply for that? This is, this is really a poor way to manage a large organization that takes a lot of expertise. And both Superintendent Vanderkar and Dr. Wagner have come up through the ranks as volunteers, as coaches, as teachers, as administrators, and they know what kids need. They're both, they're, you know, just both excellent educators and both excellent administrators. And so to say this, they, we should get rid of all this because we think the process was flawed. Then let's look at the process and start from the beginning and not take people out of the knees. This is just an egregious over, overreach of power by the board and I just think it's wrong. It's wrong to do this to our superintendent, it's wrong to do this to any potential candidates that might be watching tonight.
Thank you, Mary. I'm going to go to Martina because she hasn't spoken and I had said everyone would have one comment since we spent a whole work session on it, so. Martina?
With respect to my peers, because we've had a whole conversation about this and it's 10:20, I'd really like to call the question.
So I believe calling the question, we need a two-thirds vote. So how many people would like to call the question? Raise your hand. One, two, three, four. So four to three, that I don't think is two-thirds for seven. Okay, so. Go ahead, Gordon.
Thank you. And I don't want to rehave the whole conversation we had before and obviously we have different senses of what would be best for the search. The only thing I wanted to add is that in terms of what I'm proposing, I don't think we need to decide how this should be handled. Like, as I said, I would like to, I would like to have leadership have a chance to have a further discussion with the interim superintendent about that. We just need to decide that this one thing, we're not going to move ahead with tonight and we're going to look at another way to do. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Laurel?
Um, I don't think it's an overreach. I think we're doing our job. I think it's, the difference is interim superintendent as opposed to a permanent superintendent. And so for an interim who may not be in place past what would be June of this year, I maybe have that wrong, so please don't lose your mind on that one, should not be hiring permanent staff for years out because a new superintendent gets to choose their own immediate staff and it will cost our district a lot of money. Mary, your mic is on. And so so it's important that we understand that. I also think, I just want to point out to you, Judy, to restrict board voice and to say you can only talk so much is not part of Robert's rules unless we all agree on it. So just, I just want to point that out. This is concerning on a lot of levels and I think it's concerning in a way that it's overreach on the part of the superintendent. So if we need to talk about this in executive session or somewhere else, I am okay with that. We were in a situation where we could not talk about a lot of the things we needed to talk about and I, I think we need to have more discussion on this. This is not simplistic. This is a, a long contract without inviting the rest of the people who could possibly do this position to the party to find out who's the best for the position. It's an assumption that just know who's best. And so we have nobody who looks any different in the executive part of our district. That is problematic. And if other board members can't see it, that worries me because the other thing Alma talked about is how much, how important is for us to be working on equity in a foundational way, not performance, foundation. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurel. Maya and then Mary. Maya, you're muted. Sorry.
Sorry, it's getting late. I, I agree with, with some of what Mary's saying. Not the part about it being a gross overreach and micromanaging, but because I think it is part of our due diligence, but I, but I, and the part that I, that resonates with me, Mary, is that this is a conversation about process. And I, I, I hope that when, whatever we emerge from tonight, that we commit to having a conversation about process. I, I do think that in some cases, there might be folks who look at this and say, I don't want to be somewhere where they tell me who I can and cannot hire. But I'm also remembering the superintendent from Ben Lapine, whose name I can never remember, who said that every position in a leadership position, when he was superintendent, was conducted with an open search that involved the community. I'm not necessarily sure it needs to extend to involve the community, but I think that the open search component is the part that's missing here and the part that also doesn't communicate to the other members of our senior staff that they have the same opportunities available to them. And I think that that is, that that's a dangerous message to send that, that, that they're not given the same chance at promotion was afforded to Dr. Wagner. And that, that part is the, is the part that makes me nervous in terms of our, our ability to not only attract a potential superintendent, but also potential upper-level administrative work and not just attract, but to retain. So that part that's sitting with me, and again, I just want to emphasize that I really appreciate you calling out that this is a question about process and I want that to be the emphasis from, from where I make my decision.
Thank you. Mary?
Thank you. I'm not going to prolong the conversation, but since the motion to call the vote failed, I will continue to try to make my point. I think this is an extremely slippery slope that we're embarking, if this is what the board intends to do. Where does it stop? Does it stop at the assistant superintendents? Then we go to directors? Do we go to principals? Do we go to bus drivers? I mean, there's got to be a logical place where we say, we hired the superintendent, we have faith and confidence in the superintendent, whoever that might be, and we trust that person. We are equal partners with the superintendent, but that doesn't mean that we're going to micromanage every hire. And I just think it's, it's a, it's a gross insult to our current staff to say that. This is not going to help our superintendent.
Mary, your voice is cutting in and out from your mic. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Well, I don't know all what you heard, but I just think this is, again, it's a slippery slope. Where does it stop? Does it stop with assistant superintendents, directors, et cetera, bus drivers? I don't know. And I think it's, it's also an insult to our senior staff who are, who are looking, well, if they're going to do this to the superintendent, are they, am I next? I just think it's a really, really slippery slope. It's a bad practice. And as you recall, I was on the short end of the vote to call the question, so as long as the debate continues, I will continue to offer my opinion on that. Thanks.
Alicia?
Thanks, Judy. You know, it's interesting as we do talk, if you do talk about it being a process, you know, Maya, you kind of said that's what you're looking at. I, I, I'm that's hard because we had board members saying hire, hire, permanent and their only way to do that would be to hire inside. Who else did, did the superintendent talk to? Who else did they discuss if they were interested in the job? I know there were people, I don't have the exact details because I didn't ask for that. I also know that she took her decision to leadership. So it wasn't like she ran, did a, what's the word I'm looking for, and run. That didn't happen at all, that I don't believe. So that's why I'm more comfortable with that. And then also when you looked at the list that was provided for us of all the past people, the assistant superintendents, there was, it was, it was a large percentage that were appointed and some appointed by interim superintendent. So there's kind of a past practice. So I'm fine moving forward with the new, whoever we hire as superintendent, talking about how things might look because I think we do have some opportunity there, particularly around doing the equity work. But I'm not willing to go back and say, for Sid, for Superintendent Vanderkar, we changed the rules on you. She, you know, whether you agree she should have done that or not, she did follow the rules. There wasn't a breach in that. And I think it was fascinating to me to talk to Alma about the way they do, that they're involved in these hires of top administrative staff. And so that may be a place to put our energy and not our energy, second guessing our superintendent. And I think she did follow the rules, so that's where I stand. Thanks. Or said.
Maya?
Yeah, the, the timing of this conversation really stinks. I appreciate that comment, Alicia, of course. I do, I have a question of clarification because I wasn't on the board and I'm trying to remember that chart that I appreciate you pointing out because I think patterns tell us a lot. My understanding of the two previous appointments in these assistant superintendent positions were that they were both done with a job posting and interviews. So in terms of process, that's the process that Sydney chose to do with these two positions prior to this round. So and then there was the discussion as to how George Russell handled those, his appointments as well, which honestly was a while ago, so it's, you know, things have definitely changed since then. But I think it's important to note that, that when, when interim superintendent Vanderkar, sorry, appointed the assistant superintendents prior to the departure of Jose Salgado and that opening, that they were, they were done with a, with a posting and an interview process, not, not a, not a process that didn't involve those steps.
So Maya?
Yeah.
I have an answer for you. I have that in front of me. There were 13 on here and three were application and 10 were appointment. So if that answers your question.
No, my question isn't that. My question is, the two appointments that interim superintendent Vanderkar did for assistant superintendents, both of those involved posting and interviews, correct?
And I misunderstood.
Yeah, so I'm just, it feels like that's the standard that was set and it's not us who are changing those rules. It's just, it, it, again, I want this post to be done bulletproof. I don't want to have ourselves in a position where people feel critical of it. I, I want to be able to support it without any hesitation. And that, that shift, when I saw that chart, that shift really just made me pause.
Thank you. I guess I wasn't understanding. Thank you for clarifying that. Yeah. Laurel?
I mean, the discussion we're having here is to say, you know what, equity doesn't matter. We're just going to let somebody choose this position. Though all the steps could have happened, they did not happen and that's fine to some of our board members, which is really disturbing to me because I, I really want to believe this work on equity is as important to all of us. Because if there is a chance for somebody, black, brown, indigenous, Pacific Islander, to come and apply for this job, there was no chance. There was no chance. We need different voice at the top or else all the decisions stay the same and they happen like this. This is not, this can't even happen where I work. This is not a, this kind of, this can't happen because it's not okay. You can't just say, yeah, I'm just going to put this person at a very, at one of the highest levels and just make it happen. The, the board can do it, but not the, you know, I'm talking about. Anyway, the fact remains, it's either equity is important or it's not. The fact remains is that chart you guys are kind of confusing, is not confusing. Most of those were permanent superintendents making appointments. That is so different. They can choose their cabinet. While I would prefer equity and, you know, giving chances, I absolutely would not be having, be this worried and upset if it was a permanent superintendent doing this. I would not because what I know is that a permanent superintendent can choose their cabinet and we will pay as a district a lot of money because of this contract. That is what is going to happen if we have a different superintendent. That is important to realize. It's, it's, it's not as simplistic as just being like, let, let her do it because we trust her. Sure. She's, she's doing her job and all that, but there's, there's some, there's some ethics at play here that are, that are are extremely worrisome to me. And I wish everybody felt the same, whereas worried. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with you because you're not worried as me. I'm trying to show and shed a light and hold a mirror to say, please look at the stuff that maybe you don't look at all the time because I look at it always. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else in the queue, so it might be time to call the question. Martina? I guess I'm calling the question. Okay. All those in favor of the, I'm trying to remember what the motion is. It's
Can you, can you restate the motion?
Yeah.
So we, we're on the amendment to the main motion. So it's Gordon's amendment to the main motion.
We need a motion to close debate first to call the question?
Well, no one else was in line to talk, so. Yeah, that's why I'm calling it. Oh, Maya is.
I just, I just have one more thing to say in terms of the slippery slope and moving all the way down to bus drivers. This is, this is, again, this is about a process and it's about fair practices. And the difference in the positions that you outlined, Mary, going down all the way to bus drivers, is that none of those positions are ever appointed. They all have to apply and they all have to go through a pretty rigorous process. And I don't know why we wouldn't hold everyone to that same standard. It's, that's it. I'm done.
So Martina, you want to restate the amendment that we're voting on?
It's Gordon's amendment, so Gordon, I think you should restate it.
Thanks. My amendment is that we approve all of the resolution with the exception of the position for Dr. Brooke Wagner as assistant superintendent.
All those in favor, raise your hand, or raise your hand. We have three board members voting in favor of the amendment, Gordon, Maya, and Laurel. All those opposed, raise your hand. We have four members voting against Alicia, Mary, Martina, and Judy, so the, the motion fails for the amendment. So now we're going to vote on the amendment with everyone in the, with Brooks.
Now we're returning to the main motion. We're Now we're returning to the main motion. We're voting on the main motion to approve this item from the consent agenda.
Okay. All those in favor, raise your hand. We have four yes votes, Judy, Martina, Mary and Alicia. All those opposed, raise your hand. We have.
I, I'm, I'm lost. I don't mean to abstain. I'm sorry. So we're just going back and voting for everything to go through.
Yes, that's correct. So should we start again? All those.
I, I would appreciate that. I'm sorry. I I thought Gordon was gonna, I thought Gordon was gonna bring something else up. I don't, I don't mean to put that in your lap, Gordon. I just
That's on a different, that's on a different item. That's not part of this resolution, Maya.
Okay.
No apologies. Thank you for clarifying. You should always know what you're voting on. So so we're back to the full motion of approving the personnel action number one, which includes everyone's, the Brooke Wagner contract in it. So all those in favor of that motion, raise your hand. So we have five voting yes, Maya, Judy, Martina, Mary and Alicia. All those opposed, raise your hand. We have two voting no, Gordon and Laurel. So the motion passes. Five to two. Okay, now we have the second personnel action, which is called the biggie and we, do we have a motion?
I can great. So I move approval of the item approved personnel items.
Do we have a second? Alicia, so we have Martina moving that we approve the, the personnel item that was second in the packet, personnel action.
It needs to be read out. You can't just say personnel items. That's
The, the, the title is approved personnel items.
I was just, it's number eight, it's H or letter H.
Yes, it is in your revised board packet, Laurel. And it starts on page seventeen of the revised.
I have one screen, so it's not going to do you any good.
Legal counsel wants to make a comment.
Yeah, the recommended action by the superintendent is that the board adopt the proposed resolution on personnel actions. So there's a proposed resolution and this, the recommended motion is that the superintendent or is that the board adopt the proposed resolution on personnel actions. So it's the resolution.
All right. So I move that the board approve the resolution on personnel actions.
We have a second. Alicia. Okay, Martina's moved and Alicia's seconded. Now that we have time for discussion or Gordon?
Thank you. I would, I make and propose an amendment that we, I'm kind of similar to the last thing, that we approve everything here except for section H, which is extended contracts for three cabinet level positions. And, oh, okay. So I need a second before I say anything about it. That's my, that's my proposed amendment.
Okay. Do we have a second? Laurel seconded. Gordon's moved and Laurel seconded. So now we can have a discussion. You, you can speak to the motion first, Gordon.
Thank you. So this is, I had no idea this was coming until just happening to see it in the board packet. And I would like time to defer this until there's time for either the leadership to discuss this with interim superintendent or the board to discuss this with the superintendent, whether in open meeting or an executive session. We haven't had time to consider this at all. This is not something that's time sensitive. These are positions that are already in place through the end of the 2023 school year. And the question now is about extending them to the end of the 2024 school year. I generally think this would be something that's good to leave until after we hire a permanent superintendent and let that person, whether it's Superintendent Vanderkar or somebody else, make the decision. But at a minimum, there are some, I think there's some discussion that we need to have and probably some of it, we need to have an executive session. We can't do that. We can't consult with Superintendent Vanderkar tonight. So you know, without judgment, one way or the other, that's why I think we should pass everything else and give ourselves time, either us as a board or leadership and the superintendent to, to consider this beyond just seeing it and voting on it. And I haven't seen the contracts either. So for all those reasons, thank you.
Laurel, is your hand up to speak?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So this is concerning to me. This is another appointment that goes way past, it's not even necessary for this to be in the packet because there, there this isn't over until 2023. This is political maneuvering. And it's not appropriate. I am, I am upset. And I really want the board to look at this critically. I will lose faith in this board myself if this is not looked at critically because to make permanent appointments, again, which will cost the district a lot of money because the, the new superintendent will get to appoint these people themselves is and to not care about this is it's against a breach of my ethic. I can never vote for something like this. So I would hope that everybody looks at it critically and we get time to discuss this. And if we have a good discussion about it and we hear about the whys and the reasons and the necessity and perhaps even I would vote for it, for to have it flipped in the middle of this as if it's the same as everything else, when all the other people, the dates come up as the March fifteenth of this year. It's concerning and I do not think above board. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Maya.
I just implored the board to, to postpone this conversation. We heard from Christine that there is not a pressing need for us to make these decisions today. And this involves people's livelihood and professions. And I think we owe it to them to have the conversation fully informed and fully fueled. Forty-five minutes ago, I predicted that we would be at this for a while and here we are. So I just, I, I, I really encourage us to, to, to delay this conversation.
Mary. I'm going to point out that these are annual renewals of contracts. These are existing employees. And so this isn't coming from nowhere. It's something that the board does every year. And on a routine basis, it extends contracts of existing employees. Employees are on this call right now. And so this is really an overreach, again, by the board. It's micromanaging. This is the superintendent staff. The superintendent can hire the persons that he or she wants around them. I would hire maybe different persons, but I'm not the superintendent. I've worked long enough to know that I don't have everything that's needed and I need people to complement my skills. And I think that's what's happening. And again, these are renewals of contracts. They're not, it's not surprising. It's not out of nowhere. It's something the board does every year. I realize some newer board members haven't gone through this process. But that's why it's on the consent calendar. It's an annual process and we owe it to those employees, speaking of personal reputations, to move through. So they have some, some certainty about what's happening. This sidestep is just insulting, I think, to us as a body. And again, certainly to any candidates that might want to apply for the permanent superintendentship for this district. This is doing us more damage as a board than anything else that I can think of.
Laurel.
Mary, I agree with you for the majority of these appointments or not appointments. Sorry for my, my tiredness. They are exactly what you say. These three people that we have pulled out do not, their contracts are not up till 2023. These are extensions. They are not renewals. Renewals, I absolutely agree with. Extensions should be done by the new superintendent, whomever that may be. That is what I'm saying. I agree emphatically with you. But this is not the same thing. I encourage you to look at H in our board packet.
Karen, you put on your, did you have a comment about this?
I did and it's late, so forgive me. It's a, it's a technicality. Renewals are for probationary employees. Extensions are for contract employees. So I just wanted to correct Laurel and not just Laurel. I'm sorry. I just wanted to correct everybody to understand that extensions are if they're contract employees and all of the employees that are on the biggie, which we call it that list as extensions are because they are contract as opposed to temporary or probationary.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I used the wrong, the wrong words. I'm sorry.
It happens all the time, Mary. So please don't worry. That's why I just wanted to chime in and just be clear.
Thank you, Gordon. Thank you, Karen. That was helpful. I had that question.
Thank you. I, I just want to, well, first stress again that there is no need to do this tonight. This is, we're talking about a contract, extending a contract from 2023 to 2024. There is no time urgency to this. I, I personally have some questions about some of these and I know that other board members have some as well. And that's not something we can, we should or can discuss here. That's something I, I think that's only discussable in executive session and with, at a time that the superintendent can make. I also know that I, I, one of the important things that I don't know is that I know that there are cases where and I'm, I don't know, in 4G or elsewhere, where there are contracts like this that would in some ways tie the hands of a new superintendent and say, well, if you come in and then you want to make a change, there's a multi hundred thousand dollar payout that makes that difficult to make. I have no idea if that's here because we haven't seen the terms of these contracts and we can't see them now. I think, I don't know. I think we can probably only see them in executive session. Also, it's certainly not appropriate to do that tonight. And so for all those reasons, I can't see why we would rush to say we're going to do that now without any consideration of any of that. And, and you know, with the possibility of tying the hands or making things difficult for an incoming superintendent. Thanks.
Mary.
And I guess my question be what, what, what will change in a week? We'll, we'll be asked to do this again in a week. At some point, we have to, have to make a decision. It just seems like the, the intent is to, you know, again, paint the district in as worse, worse light as possible. Again, if I was somebody that was thinking about applying for this job, I sure would, sure would not. I would be concerned about my ability to hire a staff. And so I don't see how going into an executive session in a week or whatever is going to change the, 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 the final conversation around this. This is, these are recommendations to extend contracts. Unless, you know, the intent is to tell the employees, we don't want them. That's a whole different process. I again, think this is a slippery, slippery slope and overreach of board authority, especially at the non-assistant superintendent level. So, thank you.
Gordon, did you have an answer to the question? Great.
Yes, I, I think what I would look for to be different than tonight partly is that we'd get some information, which is we potentially see what's in the contract. But also I just, I think that there are issues involved here that we need to discuss, at least with Superintendent Vanderkar and maybe among ourselves. And that, and honestly, I don't, I would like to give, as I'm sure we all would, Superintendent Vanderkar enough time to the point where she's ready to do that, whether that's a week or two weeks, but at a time when, when she can do that. I think we have to have that conversation. After that conversation, we'll, we'll decide whatever we decide. It's not a indefinite put off thing and it's not prejudging the issue. It's giving, it's giving appropriate process the time. Thank you. And I guess, well, yeah, sorry, that's it.
Maya.
I, I just, I, I, I just want to encourage us to, to, to remember the, the power behind assuming good intent and remaining curious and, and, and all of the, the things that have been said by Mary make me very curious, Mary. And, and I, and I am thinking through them really deeply because I do value the, the length of your experience and your institutional knowledge. I just really, I, I hope that that, I hope that we can engage in this conversation without going the route of, of assuming that there's malintent and not assuming that there's just concern versus some, some plan that is, that is in place already, or I, I don't, I'm not even sure. I just, I, I hope that we can, we can extend that courtesy to each other where, where good intent is something that we all deserve to, to have as the assumption behind our words.
Laurel.
Thank you, Maya. I appreciate that as well. I we have a job to do. Our job is to look at things critically and to make decisions if we need to. It's not to leave most things aside and then, and then decide, oh, maybe this one. If, if you have several board members that are concerned about something, if it shouldn't be, you know, I'm tired. I just want to get this done. It really should be because I'm tired. But it, I'm also very much about the process and seeing it through and know, understanding it more. And if I am wrong, I'm more than willing to admit that. There's, and I do not think anybody who's watching this, who's considering being part of our district, though they probably left a while ago, would see this and go, oh, they these caring, thoughtful, wondering people are horrible. They would be looking at this probably excited, I hope. Based on everything that Alma showed us earlier, those are the people we want to come and apply for this job. So I hope they see it that way because that's what it is. It's okay to ask questions. It's okay to be curious and it's okay to get those answers because that's our job. That's what the people voted us in to do and I'm going to continue doing it. Thank you.
Mary.
I will again point out, this is an annual process that we go through. Delaying it a week to learn more isn't going to do a lot of good, in my opinion. Other than, again, delay the process to hire a new permanent superintendent. And so I'm, I'm ready to call the question.
So do we vote to call the question then? Yes. Okay. All those who would like to vote now, please raise your hand. Okay, there's four. All those who would like to keep debating, raise your hand. Because so.
Can we take a vote on who wants to nap for a little while and then come back?
I saw Karen's screen on again. Karen, did you have something?
I was going to butt out in case there was, since you were voting. Just want to be really clear. This is as, as somebody referenced, an annual process that has a very important date. March fifteenth is a requirement in statute that we have to take action on extending or renewing these contracts. And if it doesn't happen by March fifteenth, it is automatically assumed that they will be. So I just want to be really clear with that. So people understand this is an annual process that's very routine.
So can I just ask you, did you say they'd automatically be renewed? So we
I, I did. If, if we don't take action, the assumption is these, these employees have rights on their contracts. And so then they would automatically roll over. So I just, that's important information for everyone to have. It is time sensitive, which is why the biggie always comes to this board meeting. Which is why the biggie always comes to this board meeting. Sorry, I shouldn't call it the biggie. We call it a biggie because it's. Uh, addressing the contracts of all of our employees. So it is, it is a very big annual process.
Thank you. Gordon.
Well, I guess in terms of the time sensitivity, there are a lot of people on this list who are getting extensions from this year to the next year. This one, if we don't do now, we have plenty of time to decide we want to extend from two thousand twenty-three to twenty-four. Sorry, Karen, you want to speak to that?
Um, there are difference in teachers have two-year rolling contracts. Administrators are on a three-year rolling contract, which is why it's two years out that we extend and teachers are one year out. So again, that's, that's in statute. So if we don't do it, it will automatically roll for the two years.
I understand, but if we decide not to do it, if we say now, no, we're not going to do that. We're not banned from saying. Two months from now, yes, we want to do that. Right?
That's a good question that this late at night I would want to slow down and look at Gordon. I, I apologize for not being firm on the answer.
That's okay. There's things I want to slow down and look at too. And, you know, I, I, nobody has to answer, but like I, I'm kind of curious if. Board colleagues would say like, yes, even if there was a three hundred thousand dollar payout that might, you know, be to tie the hands of an incoming superintendent. I would vote for this anyway. And I'm not, I have no idea if there is, but for us to say, we're going to do it tonight without that. I, I think is a mistake. And I also think. You know, what, what Laurel said, one of the things that Laurel said is like, so look, this is a big decision. We just went through this retreat of trying to act like a. Team. So we have almost half the board. We have three of seven people saying. I, I'm not comfortable with this. I want another week or something to have more conversations to find something out. And I would hope that that by itself would be. Would be strong enough reason since there's nothing lost by doing that. Thanks.
Mary.
I, I want to say again, this is an annual process. If the, if the contracts are flawed, this isn't the place to try to re- renew the contract or to. To rehash the contract. It's in state law that we have to do this. I don't, it's an annual process. This isn't coming out of left field. It's entirely within our policy. It's, things have been followed, rules have been followed. I don't understand why another week would help us get there unless we want to read all the different contracts. And again, I'm going to call for the question.
Okay, so everyone who wants to. I don't think the same person can call for the question. It needs to be somebody else in Robert's rules. I only saw, I didn't see that, but does anyone else want to call? I, I don't know that that's a rule. So you're sure that, that you know that, Laurel.
Judy, could we find out if other people want to speak? I don't have anything else to say, but if other people want to, if nobody else wants to speak, this is easy. If other people want to speak. I personally would support that.
This is.
Laurel's got her hand up and looks like Maya, so. I, Maya, did you have something to respond to that? Because I can go after you.
I just have a clarifying question. The question that we're, um, calling is that of. Delaying this decision to our next meeting on Wednesday. Okay, I see one person nodding and one person shaking their head.
Was that, was your amendment for a one-week delay? Is that right, Gordon? Or is it just to pull those?
Well, I, I had just said to pull them, but I'm happy to say it's a one-week delay if it's important to act before March fifteenth. I mean, I, I didn't specify. I just said we wouldn't do it tonight, but that's fine with me if we want to do that.
So does that, uh, so are you making a friendly amendment to your own amendment?
I guess I am. Thank you.
And who seconded it? Laurel, are you okay with the friendly amendment? Okay, great. Okay, so. I don't know about whether we want to call the question. Then we have two people in the queue to talk. I don't know about the Roberts rule that it has to be someone different. Um, yeah, the same person can't keep continually call the question because it. It has to be other people. Anyway, my point here is Mary keeps on saying it's just the same thing over and over. Just do it. It's, we've done it always this way. It's fine. The reality is, we don't want the things exactly the same way it's always been. That's why we were voted in. The second part of this is. If it was something so simplistic, it could have been explained a ton better than it was. Because it wasn't. It was like many things. Since I've been elected to this board, it's just kind of thrown at us and I believe it's purposefully to just kind of be like. Maybe they'll, maybe they won't see it. And I, it really is unkind to your new board members. If it's something that you all understand and your new board members are like, what? Then that's not okay. And so for us asking for more time for understanding is completely, completely okay. And I would hope my fellow board members would consider that in their decision-making. Mary.
I, I'm going to call the question one more time. Call for the question to vote.
Okay, I don't think we have anyone else's hand up, so I don't know that we even have to vote on calling the question. So should we, can we just vote? Yes. Okay. So the amendment now is Gordon, tell us the amendment.
The amendment is to approve everything in this proposal tonight except. Um, clause, the three positions in clause H, which we will delay for one week until our next board meeting.
The, the maker of the motion, please read that with the name so I know who I'm voting on.
Okay, section H says Carolyn Delf, that's Carrie, I assume, Christine Nesbit, Kyle Tucker. Those are the three positions.
Thank you.
So all those in favor of the amendment, raise your hand. Okay, we have three votes. Yes, Laurel, Maya and Gordon. And all those opposed, raise your hand. We have four votes. No, Martina, Judy, Mary and Alicia. So now we go to the, the full motion, the full packet. And do we? It's for the, the. Resolution. For.
I can restate it. It's, uh, I had moved that the board adopt the proposed resolution on personnel actions.
Okay, um, that's been moved and seconded. So all those in favor of the motion as it is on the table. Oh, uh, Maya.
I just, I, um. There's a whole lot of folks impacted by this decision and, and I, it just, it's, um. It's not something that I'm willing to, to hold up. I just, it's. It's disappointing to me that after articulating that I, I don't feel. In a place where I can thoughtfully and respectfully make this decision that we, that we. That we, that I wasn't, that I, I'm going to hold it to me that, that I wasn't heard. And, and so. I, I will, I will support this, but I, I feel really, um. I feel like I'm being put in a position where I'm asked to vote in an irresponsible way and that, and that feels very uncomfortable to me.
Laurel. I would say. That I have zero belief that anything that happened in that retreat at this point. If this is what hope is, then what? No. I asked many ways and kindly for, um, time and understanding. And I was completely ignored for, by, for my fellow board members. The agreements we have are rubbish. So I think we still have to vote. Question's been called. Yes. So all those in favor of the. Passing the resolution in full as it's in the packet, raise your hand, vote yes. So we have. One, we have six yes votes, Laurel, Judy, Maya, Laurel, uh, Mary, Martina and Alicia. All those who vote no, raise your hand. And Gordon is voting no. So the resolution passes with a six-one vote. So I know everyone is really exhausted. I'm just going to say is. We do have an item for, items for future meetings. We have a training from OSBA on equity governance. On March seventh. We have now a special board meeting that was on the agenda as a work session, but it will be a special board meeting so we can vote. On the characteristics and qualities and process for the superintendent search on March ninth. And then we have a full board meeting on March sixteenth. Gordon.
Is this the, the time to make proposal for something for, okay, so I propose that we have. Consideration of, uh, doing a five-year pilot project of three librarians. In which we could hear both from the librarians and from district staff, including from the. Either Andrea Bellis or whoever from the district on the finances of how this might be. Might be financially feasible in a way that would be least disruptive to the district.
Do we have other board members that would like that on the agenda? Okay, we have one. We have, and three. So we have three board members that will go to be put on the agenda for the. To leadership. Okay, Maya.
Would like to, um, um, amplify Mary's request earlier to have. Uh, a time to talk about specifically the goal of. Addressing North Eugene High School's future. Sorry, sorry, North Eugene region's future. Um, and, and including that conversation support for the folks there who are. Hoping to have a listening session with our attention. Um, so that they can have our support, knowing that we will all attend versus having a listening session where only three of us can attend.
Thank you. Are there other board members that support that? Yeah, good. Okay, we think we all do. And I'm going to be asking the. Two board members that are on that committee, Gordon and Mary, for a good process and timeline on that, for sure.
It's a staff team. It's not a committee at this point, just to clarify.
Laurel.
I would like to start the process. I know we have a work session coming up for a communications policy. Committee to be started. So I'd like that added to the agenda and then we will, to begin that. And so we have some direction for our work session.
Great. So you want to put on the agenda to discuss setting up a committee to prep for that and. Sort of outline where we're headed in my.
Well, as far as I understand, staff will need to be making committee to help with the policy process for this. So staff and board members and perhaps community members as well, hopefully.
Are there, um, other board members that support that? Yeah. Okay, seeing, I'm seeing support. Good. Anything else?
The other thing I had is I would like to start the process for looking at a base wage of eighteen dollars an hour and what that entails. I know the staff have done some preliminary work on this and I would like to, um. Begin that process officially.
So just.
Adding it to the agenda.
Okay. Get an update from staff on where they are with it and get information.
Oh, I think we need to. Make it a, a board policy that of what our base wage will be.
Do we have other board members that support that? Okay, all right. It's not, it's on the list. So I have four things going forward. Anything else? Then, uh, Alicia.
I would just like to ask that we, um. Prioritize the, uh, things that are still that we all agreed to as a board. Ahead of what we're adding. So we're getting kind of late in the year and I, I don't want. I'll lose what we're adding. And I know leadership will look at that, but I think I would be disappointed if we. Bump those other items, the communication plan and the, and the climate change. So if we could keep those ahead, that's what I'm asking. I don't need a vote. I'm just asking.
Right.
You to consider that.
Definitely. Anything else? Then I am going to adjourn this meeting at eleven fifteen. We made it in the same day we started. So thank you, everyone.